And the city in which you live, for the record, that would be great. If you haven't filled out a blue card yet, what I'd like you to do is fill one out and give it to us at the end.
Yeah, I filled one out for two of the three, and I didn't know there was a third, so here I am.
Oh, okay. So, this has to only be focused on the map.
And can I do the other two later on, or so this is my one shot?
No, no. Only, you can only talk about the map.
Oh, okay, alright. Oh, I see.
Yeah, you can, well, yeah, well, if you, you can come back up for the next one, come back up for the next one.
I might get the hook by then, though.
The topic, we haven't started, so don't worry.
Okay.
So if you'd like to talk about the map, please go ahead, but please state your name, mailing address, and city in which you live.
Sure, it's Jim Welch. I'm at 1130 Creekside Drive in the city. And I had been out of town, so I really hadn't had a chance to study the agenda. But I, I take strong offense, or not offense personally, but at the way the open land is being viewed, and I know it's private property and people can develop it, but between the rivers is some pretty beautiful areas. And talking about when those lots develop is getting way far ahead of where we are, as far as the city goes, I think. And so I wish we maybe not sort of tumble over our own feet and go that far ahead, you know, at this point.
So, this, this topic tonight is about the map itself, not about developments or anything along those lines.
Well, it did, it did come up as far as the right-of-way goes.
Correct.
And so that's the connection.
I understand now, okay.
Yeah, so, that's it.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments with regard to the map? Mr. Welch, I'll bring you back up for the other one, too. I found your card had two of mine, so thank you. Any, any other comments? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing for the official city map, move on to our next public hearing, which is a Rockwell Project Plan Development Overlay District. The purpose is to hear public comments on rezoning 8.62 acres at 121 to 135 North Main Street for the Rockwell Mixed-Use Development. The parcels of the proposed development are zoned Mixed-Use Commercial District and identified by tax key numbers OCO 053, 056, 3.346, OCO C, and you'll see it in the announcement. The request is to add the planned development overlay to the existing MC zoning district. The purpose of the PD overlay is to allow a structure to exceed the allowable height of sixty feet, excuse me, fifty feet, to sixty-nine points, feet, six inches. Reduce the shoreline setback from forty-five feet to zero feet, and to remove the building setback requirement of five feet within the first thirty feet to zero feet, and to reduce the ten-foot step-back between thirty to fifty feet to five feet. If approved, the applicant intends to develop a five-story mixed-use building containing retail and restaurant on the ground floor at grade parking and underground parking and twenty residential condominium units. Mr. Gallo.
Thank you, Mayor Alderman. I'll give a brief introduction to the, this PD request this evening for the public hearing. I always start out with a general location map. In the public notice, it was described as several parcels. It's approximately 121 through 135 North Main Street. The location is showing up on the screen. We all know it's, has water on one side and Main Street on the other, and Village Green with public parking on the other side. There's a few things I'd like to talk about tonight during the presentation that you'll hear about, so I wanted you to see visibly where they're located. There's some light poles in, in the water. Right now, that's because the boardwalk used to extend over the water and, and go along this way here, and then that was removed several years ago. The light poles were never removed. The, the boardwalk is gonna be extended, and that's where that red area is gonna be. The parking lot would be extended, and that's where the purple area is. And then I am gonna talk a little bit about this transformer is being relocated as part of the site development, so I wanted you to see, and I thought this was the best slide to show where that transformer is located. What is the project? It's, it's described as a mixed-use building. So here's a rendering. This is a drawing, computer-aided drawing of what the building would look like. It's a five-story building, mixed-use, having non-residential uses on the ground floor, and then four stories of residential units above the non-residential. The non-residential would include retail, potentially restaurant use on the ground floor. These are some renderings of, of some of the areas of the building. You can see down here, there's a, a boardwalk extension that's part of the plan. There'd be some signage that talks about its public boardwalk, even though the building itself cantilevers over it. This would be extension of the existing boardwalk. That's one of the ideas behind this project. There's also the architectural features. You can see the nice, the windows here that have the, the arched ways resembling a historic look to it. This, this object right here on the side of the building, that's gonna be a signage. There is a step-back that I wanted to point out, 'cause that's gonna be talked about later in the presentation. You can see there's a step-back there. This is the front facing Main Street, front of the building. There's a cantilevered item here. I'll be showing that later on in the presentation as well. So it just kinda gives you some feel on, on the building and the architecture, the exterior. The site itself is on the agenda for what's called a Certified Survey Map. That would be to combine the four parcels plus part of the Village Green. The total site area that this project needs is 0.62 acres, so a little more than a half acre, less than a two-thirds, twenty-six thousand square feet. Of that, 0.37 acres is owned by Rockwell right now, and a quarter acre is city land, part of the Village Green, as well as that existing parking area up there now. So that is, this is a private-public partnership. They would be, this land would be going towards the project. So obviously, the area in blue would be the city land, and the orangish color is the Rockwell property. So there's some Village Green changes being made with this. They are using, using some of it. Right now, there's a total of ten or eleven parking stalls, and they'd be moving it to twenty-one parking stalls when all done. This parking lot, even though it's part of their project, it would maintain a public parking lot. And I guess the purpose of this slide really is to show that the total amount of public space, they calculate it as increasing because there is removal of some of these sidewalks. So the amount of green area that would be there is actually gonna be greater. There is a floodplain fill request along with this, and we did not act on this. It's not on the agenda, but I wanted you to be aware of it, so you have the full picture. This would come later if, if need be, if, if the site plan is approved. They're adding twenty-six cubic yards of fill. The lake would rise 0.002 inches, and I was told by an engineer that's about the thickness of a sheet of paper. So the, the flood elevation would change from 861 to 864 in that area in the green right there. So that's something that would come, if, if the site plan and the zoning is approved, they would have to come back for a floodplain map amendment. They have talked with the FEMA and the DNR, and, and they've got a conditional letter of, of map revision. It's called a CLOMAR, based on fill. And so there's been other eyes looking at that floodplain, and they feel it, it would not create any adverse impacts. So, but we'd still have to amend our, our floodplain maps on the city. So this is a planned development. You're wondering, well, what is a planned development? What does that all mean? Well, they can request exemptions from our zoning ordinance, and in return, the city is to get some public benefits. So I would like to just go through those a little bit. The building setbacks, they, we have a zero setback in the downtown. We have buildings right next to each other. But we have a forty-five-foot setback from the, the water, and they're actually wanting to go right up to the water's edge with the boardwalk. The building height, we have a fifty-foot requirement in, in this particular part of the downtown. Other areas, it's much higher, but in this area, it's fifty feet. They want it to go up to sixty-nine feet, six inches, and then they'll have some additional equipment on top going a little higher than that. And then building step-backs, we have a requirement. We didn't want that canyon effect of buildings. We want some to go up a little and then over, and then up a little bit more and over. And I can read you the code. It says, "Buildings with an overall height of fifty feet or greater shall incorporate a minimum of a one-five-foot step-back in the first thirty feet, and then another second ten-foot step-back thereafter." And they don't meet that. We'll talk about architecture a little bit later on. So what does the city get in return for granting some flexibility on setbacks, height, and step-backs? Public restrooms, I'll show you where those are. The boardwalk extension. Public parking expansion. Environmental cleanup, removal of blight, a public fishing pier, historic architecture, and Village Green enhancements. None of this would happen without the project, so I think that's really important to, to keep in mind. There is public benefits as part of this application. So the exemption number one, building setback encroachment, we talked about this. They, they showed this exhibit. I wanted you to know the, that there's, the boardwalk is right here, and the building goes all the way up, right up to the water's edge line. So the building will cantilever over the boardwalk and be right up to that. Zero foot there. This is an example of what it would look like. You can see the boardwalk is, is right here, and the building. Also, I put this in because it's kind of a setback encroachment, but kinda, kinda not. It's going, not only is the zero setback right here, but the building has some features like these canopies that'll actually be out over the sidewalk along Main Street. They'll, this is not new in the downtown. We've got many types of canopies and, and signs that encroach into the right-of-way and the, in Wisconsin Avenue and Main Street. But we do require some type of encroachment agreement, revocable encroachment, that, that's part of the, the to-do list if this is viewed favorable tonight. Exemptions two and three is the building height and step-back. You can see that they says "top of parapet, sixty-nine feet, six inches", and that's what they're calling the building height. I agree. That's, that's, by definition, that's the building height, sixty-nine feet, six inches. They're also showing a couple step-backs. They're showing a five-foot between levels three and four. This is somewhere where it's five-foot. People can walk out here. But they really don't have, that's at the forty-two-foot level. They don't have anything in the first thirty feet that's required. They say, well, this is out there. That's a canopy along Main Street, but it's not truly on their property. So they are asking for an exemption. The architecture was approved by the Architectural Commission. We talked about the step-backs quite a bit, and they said that even though it doesn't meet the definition to the letter of the law, they, they felt it met the spirit and the intent of that code, giving this some visual step-back, so it doesn't look like it's one contiguous building going straight up. I wanted you to see how tall the, the top it is. This bottom line here is, is the sixty-nine feet, six inches level. And then there's some mechanicals and elevator shafts and some trellises up here. This will be public space for, not public, but open to people, private residents, to go up there and, and walk around. So there, it is usable space. They do have some, some mechanicals and stuff that goes all the way up to the eighty-foot level. Those were concentrated more in the center of the building, so when you're down below, you won't see up that high. They've provided a roof structure height diagram, and the stuff in, in red is six feet. And then the taller stuff is more in the center, the nine-foot four, that's the elevators. And then these are the elevators right here, is fourteen feet. So mostly around the border is, is, is stuff that will not be seen from down below. Let's get into some of the public benefits. They are including public restrooms. We all know there's a need for some restrooms down near the Village Green area. They'll put a men's and a women's room in, and this'll be operated by them, no cost to the city, and be maintained by them as well, no taxpayer dollar. There's five stalls on each side, five women's, and then two, two water closets for the men with three urinals. So it's a little janitor's closet right here that would be part of it as well. So there's public restrooms facing the parking lot of Village Green. They are putting in some parking as well. Forty-two stalls, which conforms to the code requirements. That's two stalls per unit. All the stalls are underground, so the people, the cars will be driving in through this area here and, and then going around. So forty-two stalls underground. In addition to that, they'll be adding ten new surface stalls for public parking. This'll, the agreement for this hasn't been finalized. Again, that'll come back to the council about who's replaying, you know, taking snow removal and stuff like that. But I wanted to show you an exhibit. The, the underground parking is for private, and then the surface parking would all be public parking. So encroachment onto the Village Green has been a, a question of, of what's going on here. So there's eighteen feet of encroachment from the existing sidewalk edge to the proposed sidewalk edge. So they're basically taking eighteen additional feet, not taking, but that's incorporating into the project. The, this darker line shows the existing edge of the parking lot that's currently there right now, and this is where the new parking lot would be. The, the driveway to get into this would be moved a little bit further south, and that's closer to the lighted intersection, just by, this is where the existing one is right now. So there will be a total of, of twenty-one parking stalls on the, the lot. This is a good slide to talk about the, the piers as well. This is a fishing pier, and this is a, a boat-slip pier. This pier here would be a public pier that they would, they would be putting in as a public benefit. This would be a private pier with two slips for the public to use for transient boats to come dock and then, and then eat in the downtown or shop in the downtown. There was some discussion by the Plan Commission about this parking stall right, right here. It's in the far southeast corner of the lot. How do you pull in and pull out of this? It would be very challenging. All these other ones, you can pull straight back into, into this area. If you pull in and all the, all the stalls are full, you can, you can back into this area and then get out. But this one was challenging. The Plan Commission had all sorts of ideas. Maybe you stripe it as nonusable. Maybe you, you, you sign it for compact cars, maybe motorcycles. Maybe you, you make this one a handicap stall, and then this could be striped. So what the solution ended up being was they, the applicants kept twenty-one stalls. I just received this today, and they, they moved all these stalls down. All the stalls do conform to our code. They're all nine by eighteen feet in size. But they moved it to create a little bit of a bump out right here. So now this car that pulls in can, can bump and turn this way and then come out. So that's, should it be a little bigger? It would've been ideal to be a little bigger, but that's about the best they could do to, and the car can still maneuver out of that. So there was discussion about traffic with any development traffic. So they, the applicants did hire a consulting firm, TAID, T-A-D-I, I'm sorry, Traffic Analysis Design Incorporated. They're one of the leading firms of traffic in southeast Wisconsin, for sure. I'll just read a little bit. It said, in the conclusion, they've submitted the entire report to us, "But the existing Main Street intersection with Wisconsin Avenue is expected to continue to operate acceptably during the peak hours with the additional traffic expected from the proposed development with increases in delay of three seconds or less, and increases in queuing for any specific movement of one vehicle or less. Therefore, no changes to the geometrics or traffic control are recommended at the existing signalized intersection." So that's the intersection of Maine and Wisconsin. "The proposed site access driveway onto Main Street is also expected to operate acceptably during the peak hours with additional traffic expected from the proposed development. In addition, based on the projected traffic volumes, turning movement volumes at the site driveway are not expected to be high enough to warrant exclusive turn lanes in the northbound or southbound traffic lanes. All movements at the study area intersections are expected to operate safely and efficiently through the opening year under current geometric and traffic control conditions." So that was done by John Bieber. It's a professional traffic engineer. So they did submit a landscaping plan. I know that the Plan Commission did look at this, but I wanted to highlight something up in the corner, and this slide did show that nicely. The Main Street changes are being updated. The crossing currently is more down by splash, and now it's gonna be moved a little bit to line up with the walkway that goes along the lakefront of, of La Belle. So that's part of the updates that this project is, is bringing. There is a lighting plan that was submitted. I know it's hard to read the photometrics, but they are adding these, these decorative lights to the area. So there will be, a parking lot will be illuminated, so when people leaving in the evening hours, we'll be able to, to see out there. This transformer was discussed at length, both with staff and the applicants and the Plan Commission, and even the Architectural Commission. I said earlier, it's being relocated, 'cause it's currently in the parking lot area. It's right here. It's on a seven-by-nine pad, and it had to go somewhere. We looked at optional alternative locations for this, and this is really about the best we can do to preserve the most amount of land on the Village Green and keep it accessible for our utilities to get to it. This transformer serves a lot of businesses in the downtown, so it really has to stay. It can't go underground. It has to be above ground. So they said either right where it is, or even closer to the sidewalk and closer this way, but you don't wanna get too, too close, because then you create potential visual impacts for people pulling out of there. So this is about the best we can do. The Architectural Commission said the worst thing you could do would be to put a fence around it, because there has to be at least three to five feet of separation of, between the fence and the structure. So now, now you're talking a really big corral, and they said just leave it alone. Maybe you could put a mural on it or something like that, or you could put some landscaping around it. So that's really up to the, the common council of what we end up doing. But they, the applicant, we asked him to provide some elevations. Here's the transformer looking across the street on, on North Main there, and here it is looking towards the, the project. So with this, there's boardwalk expansion plans, and the, the boardwalk would, would not be expanded. There's been a lot of talk about this, someday to connect. It's in the downtown plan. The boardwalk, I've had people ask me, "How wide is it?" Well, this is the current boardwalk, and this is the proposed one. It's gonna be even wider than, than what's currently out there. There's gonna be five more bumpouts, and originally, there was only one of these new light to match, but we, we asked for a secondary light. The boardwalk's being designed by Stand Tech, the same people that designed our existing one. So this'll be, the continuity will be there to, to continue the boardwalk through. And again, the, the pier would be going in, and the private with two public boat slips would be there. So the pier, public fishing pier is funded by TIF, and then this would be private boat slips. So, we're wrapping it up. The Architectural Commission approved the building design colors and materials for this building on October 5th, so last month. The Plan Commission reviewed it, and they recommended the Certified Survey Map and the PD ordinance on November 2nd of this month. There was a lot of discussion about a lot of different topics. I tried to include a lot of that in this presentation. Tonight, we have the public hearing scheduled. On tonight's agenda, we have the Certified Survey Map to combine these lots, and then to act on the planned development overlay that gives them the flexibility. Then several items in the future, such as the floodplain map amendment, the condominium plat. If this goes forward, they wanna condominiumize the building, the TIF project plan, and those various agreements that we talked about. So we have before you tonight a planned development ordinance. What does that all talk about? It grants the site and the building exemptions. It details out all the public benefits. It puts it in, in writing with signatures. There's, future agreements are required. Those are covered. The staging and the construction plans will have to be reviewed. That's talked about at length. This is gonna be a tricky one to build, because it's adjacent to our park, and it's right on, on the water, and it's right on a road. Easements and snow storage has to be finalized. That's talked about in there. The floodplain map, condo plat, and the right-of-way encroachment along Main Street. So it's not over tonight. There's still a lot of, of stuff that has to happen, and that's all put in there. But this is step one of the planned development. So the recommendation by staff and, and what the Plan Commission recommended was that you approve the Certified Survey Map to combine these lands, and this would be contingent upon approving the, the transfer of the property and the TIF project plan. And then the Plan Commission recommended approval of the PD ordinance that allows that flexibility. But you should only act on that PD ordinance if the CSM passes, because otherwise, you're approving a project that's not on land that they don't own. So really, that CSM is the first step, and then if that passes, you can act on the PD ordinance. That's all I have. I'll sit down and, and show, well, I did have two comments, or I, I received comments from two, two people, Michael Shea and Telly Tweeden at Greenland Avenue, and then Jason DeVorek both sent in letters of, of support for this project.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. I'd like to open up the public hearing. Mr. Welch, Jim, if you wanna come on back, that way we don't forget you.
Thanks. I usually look at some of the developments around the lakes and a step-back in horror, but I actually like this one. And, but one thing that was, the number that just could not appear in Mr. Gallo's presentation was the overall height. It's sixty-nine feet to the, to the, to the lip of the, of the top floor, but then all these other structures are on top of it, and I think one of them was up to sixteen, sixteen feet. And so that's an eighty, eighty-four-foot height, and that was never mentioned, and I think it's really important that, that that... Eighty feet? Okay, well, all right, but that's, it's quite a bit over the, over what we normally talk about. And for me, it just seems like this happens over and over and over. And for me, it just seems like this happens over and over and over that there's a development that seems to be, you know, reasonable, but the developer overreaches a lot of, you know, hoping that, you know, maybe when things get taken down a little bit, it'll still be within his, his investment goals for what he might be returned, you know, in height. But it just seems like those, the overreach gets all of us up in arms and the city has a big headache. And it would be nice if we could just have a, a stricter building set of, you know, building code or set of laws that might reduce some of these conflicts because I'm up here all the time and I'm sure you're tired of hearing, hearing about that. But the other thing was too was, was some of the things that Mr. Gallo said might not happen if not for this project, like some of the, you know, cleanup of some of the detritus or just the, or, or, you know, just improvements along the lakefront or the lake shore that just seem to be going, you know, going, you know, fallow or whatever. But I, I hope we could have more confidence in our city that if this doesn't get built, and I'm sure it will, that the city might find a little money to make those improvements and that the citizens themselves might take it upon themselves to, to do some of these little projects. So we don't always have to rely on developers to get stuff done, you know, so.
Jim, just for the record, can you please state your address and the city?
Sure. It's 1130 Creekside. Yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah, in the city of Oconomak.
Thank you.
So I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Dick Reiner.
Yes, I own Splash Martini Bar, which is right across the street from this development. It's, this isn't something I normally do, but I thought it was important because I've been looking at that area for 13 years and it's been relatively blighted. So when I heard somebody wanted to pump a bunch of money into it, I was kind of excited about that. I balance that with everybody's concern that we want to keep it a quaint city. So I did a lot of thinking on that, but you know, after looking at the entire city, I looked at that, it's relatively small section. And if we can get a high-class restaurant and if they have to do the high-rise to make it work, I've decided I'm in favor of it. You know, the parking may hurt us a little bit, but on the whole, that north part of Main Street has been blighted for the 13 years I've been in business. Nobody's done a thing with it. And if somebody wants to make it something into something special, I am entirely in favor of it. And I do understand the people that want to keep it the quaint Oconomak, but keep in mind, that's just one section on the lake. And I've seen their plans and they've done a good job architecturally of keeping it in the, the stone motif of the rest of the city, even more so than the other condos that have been built. So I'm very impressed with what they're doing. So being somebody on the fence, I finally concluded, my wife agrees, she wanted me to bring that up. As long as there's not a martini bar put in, I vote in favor. I think it's going to be a big boom for Oconomak. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm just going to let, for the record, Dick's at 134 North Main Street here in the city of Oconomak. So just as you, each person comes up, please state your name, full name, your residence and the city in which you live in. Thank you.
I'm Maureen Stapleton. I live at 128 West Wisconsin Avenue in beautiful downtown Oconomak. I are a condo person because I live in one of those condos. And I can recall when poor Jaime Wagon stood before a group of the city fathers back in the day and nobody knew how to spell condominium then. And some people still don't and they're afraid of them and all kinds of stuff. But anyway, Jaime M ended up building Draper Hall. And I think everybody might be familiar where it is on North Lake Road. And they had the same concerns. Oh my God, it was going to, we wouldn't see any sunlight ever again because it was going to be dark because this big building was going to be a big brick building and the sun would never shine again. Well, there's some real nice people that have lived in Draper Hall and I hope continue. And we've built other condominiums and they have afforded the city a nice, a very nice tax base without taking up too much real estate so that we can have a vibrant downtown. All the people who live vertically come down from their little condos and apartments and they walk downtown and they eat in our restaurants and they shop in our stores and they bring, by God, they bring their friends and they go to the German Christmas market and all kinds of stuff that's going on. Because I remember being the chamber president in the seventies, it was crappy here. There was nothing going on. I mean, nothing. The stores were vacant, people wouldn't walk up and down the street. It was just dead. It was not lively and vibrant like it is today. And I'm not saying the condos are the end of the world, but they sure help bring some people in a very small, by comparison to the subdivisions and stuff. They bring a nice tax base to the city. So I hope not everybody will condemn it before you really think it through and say, does it really take up that much space for the ultimate return on that investment to the city of Oconomak? And thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Mark Strong. I live at 878 Timberline Court West in the city of Oconomak. Would like to just say that my wife and I are in support of the Rockwell project. We've been impressed with just the renderings, the quality of the project. The city has done a good job of putting forth different projects that have improved just the quality of life here with schools, parks, library, and this is just another piece to that puzzle to continue to move forward in the city. So I see this project, as I stated once before, it brings the past to the present, the present to the future. And I would just ask that you consider it and approve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl Luck, 330 North Oakwood Avenue in the city of Oconomak. I know you can't give me answers tonight, but I request answers published in the minutes or even an email for the following questions I have. The Village Green, how much square footage are the Rockwell project requesting? I know he said 18 feet by whatever. I'd like to know what the square footage is. How much did the city or us taxpayers pay per square foot for Fong's Garden? Because that's how much Rockwell, well, they should be paying more than that, probably 10% more than what we paid for Fong's per square foot. And then is, who's paying for the transformer relocation because that should be on their back as well because we're giving them our land? So as I understand, they purchased point 37 acres and they need a total of point 62 acres. So we're giving them point 25 acres for a project that they knew what our building rules were and the square feet of land they were buying. And now they're coming back and saying, okay, we know we only have point 37 acres, but in order for us to do this project, the city has to give us the Village Green that everybody fought so hard to get for this city. Now, my next thing is the normal is 45 feet setback from the lake. They want to go down to zero. Doesn't the DNR have anything to say about that? I thought there was kind of rules about that. And if the DNR doesn't have anything to say about that, if you're going to pass that for this group, then you better pass it for every residence that lives on the lake in the city of Oconomak because that is only fair. As far as the other setbacks, the step back requirement of five feet within the first 30 feet to zero and reduce the 10-foot step back between 30 to 50 feet to five, once again, if you're going to approve all this, this should be approved for everybody going forward then. What is good for one is good for everyone. Yes, I am against this project. I'm not against a condo being built there. I'm not against anything like that. Just build it on the land that you purchased and stay within the rules that we all abide by. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Last time I was here, I commented on being related to the mayor of Watertown, if you recall. And that sort of, I wanted to comment about that because talk about the tale of like two cities, Watertown and Oconomak. I know like, I don't know, probably a dozen people that live in Watertown and come here to commute because everything is going on here. And just to give you a little idea of what I do, I'm an MAI. Yesterday, I spent five hours putting questions together for a attorney to cross-examine the head guy of CBRE Downtown Los Angeles. I testify in trials in Los Angeles mostly. And I just wanted to say that I think this, this building looks like a, something, a dream out of Venice, Italy or some like James Bond movie or something like that. It should be in a movie. I think it's really a spectacular building. I think it's going to enhance the community and you don't want to become like Watertown where things have basically essentially unchanged for the last 30 years, make it 50 years. And I mean, they still have Hoffa Meister's Funeral Home and the guy, the hibernating guy in the winter time on the billboard of the building for the last, since I've been alive anyways. So you don't want to have a, a city that becomes stagnated where you get no synergism, lack of financing, and then things just get stagnant and they just like stay that way for 50, 80 years, you know? So I just wanted to comment on that. I think that the constituency that has some concerns with water going underground, I happened to work as a client, Larry Flint, about 10 years ago, and he put a 35-story building right next to the Park Le Brea Tar Pits practically right across the street and went five stories down. And that building had some engineering difficulties, but they were able to pull off something like that very easily. Should be no problem at all. And that's, oh, by the way, I, I also own 110 through 114 West Wisconsin Avenue, right next to Eagles Landing. That building that was built in 1888, the green and white building, everybody calls it the old fresh bake building. I'm going to slap my name on that black beam before it kills, before, before I have to tear down that building. But anyways, I'll talk to the planning authorities and I wanted to really comment on the good job that Jason does and Bob and Kristi. So that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the common council. I'm Doug Stern, 215 East Pleasant, city of Oconomak. I'm here to speak in favor of the Rockwell development. Not to besmirch Watertown, but going back 20, 25 years, I think it's been alluded to that Oconomak people drove through, it was sort of the far eastern gate of Watertown. 15 years ago, in this very room, I happened upon a, an urban planning symposium put on by John Norquist and he emphasized energy. Energy that comes from making a city a city, not having wide roadways, but having buildings that are up on the road. And that's what this, this building is. You keep the energy focused on the sidewalks, on the green and on the street. That's what makes people come to a city and stay in a city. The people that are proposing this building are local. They're not out of state, out of county. You have MSI Construction, Dirk Dubink, who's been a, he and his family have been here forever. The vision, the planning, taking input, seize this opportunity and approve this building. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Lisa Rodolphy. I live at 215 East Pleasant in Fowler Lake Village. And that's for full disclosure, that was my husband. I just, I love this community. It's amazing between the restaurants and the shops and the two lakes. And I'm fairly new to the community, only a couple of years. But I have to say, just being here a couple of years, I've seen the energy. I've seen the growth. And in Fowler Lake Village, which is a condominium complex, you all know, it's a beautiful complex and it's a total different builder. I think there might be some crossover, but it's not the same builders, but they did an amazing job. And we do spend our money in this community. We come down from our little places, as Maureen said, and we go in and we shop and we eat in your restaurants and we pour a lot of money into it and we pay our taxes. And that to me is very important. Rockwell Partners is just going to enhance the community. Its features with the new restaurants and the walkway and the boardwalk, the archway, the signs, it's a gorgeous building. And I, I can't imagine anyone not looking at this and saying, this is progress and we need progress. We need to continue it. It's, it's just a wonderful, wonderful build out. And I think whenever people see change, it's scary. A lot of times for people, it's overwhelming, but this is progress and it's enhancing our community and I highly recommend that we take a look at this and we know that Conomak is becoming the place to be and we want to continue to be the place to be. So I highly recommend you approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Jarlin Dryer. I'm not sure if I pronounced the first name right. Jarlin?
Well, good evening. I'm Jarlin Dryer. I'm associate with Lancer Publications. That's done the PR work and for the project. There's this handout that you all received earlier and...
Can you bring the microphone down to you a little bit there? Great, thank you.
Absolutely. The handout that you received gives the details of the community outreach that we've done for Rockwell Partners that began more than a year ago. In all, there have been over 312 documented contacts with the city of Oconomak residents and the businesses and about the initial and the refined development plans for the Rockwell Partners. for the Rockwell site on Fowler Lake, which included a hundred and nine door-to-door visits to the homes, some multiple times to the same home when they had additional questions, fifty-seven visits to the businesses, and we held five informational open houses. Now, the outreach has been comprehensive and honest. Our team has tried to be respectful of all the residents and business owners. And we've incorporated their suggestions to make this a better proposal for everyone. I'm confident that anyone who wants more information about this project, um, will can find out where to find it and contact us or the Rockwell people, because we remain available to you to get this information, because we believe in it. And it has been an honor for us to work with Rockwell and MSI General and hand-in-hand with everybody who has a stake in this. And on a personal note, I am born and raised in Oconomock. I moved away, however. Within the year, maybe Maureen Stapleton can find me a place as I look forward to coming back and then sharing in the excitement of a development like this.
Thank you. That's the last blue card I have on this part of the public hearing on the Rockwell Development. Are there any other comments? Great. Yes, please. Thank you. I'm just, let's come up to the microphone, please. That's okay.
I'm really nervous. And so, um, okay, so I live out, my name is Linda Gilson and I live at four-twelve North Lake Road here in the city of Oconomock. Um, so, in any case, the number, my husband gave me like, he cannot be here because he coaches, uh, wrestling at Oconomock. In any case, so he gave, he gave me like two sheets to, to, um, to say to you, but I'm not going to. So the first one, because it's too long.
You, you do know this, this is live stream.
In any case, um, all right. So I'll just read the first, which I really think is, I want everyone to know that we, um, acknowledge and appreciate that the project, um, is going to be aesthetically and architecturally consistent with the historic nature of Oconomock. Okay, however, the size and scale of the development seems very out of place for this location. We're not anti-growth. We want our downtown businesses to thrive. We are in favor of redeveloping the space. But at the same time, we'd like to protect our small-time charm as well as, and this project clearly lacks, well, in any, okay, so I'm gonna stop there. My concern is environmental, um, impact of this, of changing the zoning, okay, of the, the zoning ordinance. The first one, for, okay, there's three things that the developer wants. The shore yard change, the step-back change, and then the vertical height change. Okay, there are three things that our city and everybody that we want, and that is the public bathroom, the parking, and the boardwalk. So, so my, um, the first one is the step-backs. It's not gonna really affect that much. Um, and environmentally, so typically with that, I'm not gonna say anything about it. The shore yard from going from forty-five feet to zero feet, I am concerned and for the environmental, let's see, impact that, or the negative environmental problems that may be occurring. Excuse me. So my first question we had asked was, has there been a site assessment? So a site assessment is what businesses or in general, just not everything, but in general, what businesses were on that property? Okay, and is there any potential for any environmental, um, damage? So I ended up getting a little bit of information on the different businesses that were in that property. The, um, let's see, well, that was a different one. Okay, so the tank, okay, so for, in eighteen, eighteen-seventy, Laurel Berg, Hugo Laurel Berg, Laurel Berg, he started to, his business and a hardware business over in the property. And then he, and then he put in a six-hundred-and-sixty-two-barrel water tank in eighteen-eighty-one. So it's on the tank, the tank is on the shore of Fowler Lake at the rear of the store. Okay, since then, the, um, the tank crashed, but he put another one in. Okay, so he put it in and it became a foundry. All right, just so...
So I'm just gonna ask you to kind of wrap it up, please?
Okay, sure. In any case, since then, there's been a foundry, two dry cleaning businesses, um, some farm machinery and different, a tin shop, fish taxidermy on that property. So my question is, like, if you go from forty-five feet shore yard to zero, you potentially are, let's see, there is a potential for environmental problems and, and that can, I don't think that can be argued. My, um, okay, so there was also, you know, on that back part...
And I apologize, but I need you to wrap up. You're well over a minute longer than allotted.
In any case, there was a gas station in the back there. So if you allow this area to be developed, you're digging up whatever was in there. Could it be foundry sludge or any of that? So that's why I'm saying, leave it alone. I mean, don't do anything, don't pull up, because if something happens... I mean, typically, I would, I am asking for an environmental site assessment because we need to know if we're pulling anything.
Thank you very much.
So, okay, all right, thank you.
Do we have any other comments from the audience? Anybody else have a blue card? I can have your blue card, please. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, especially to the residents of Oconomock and the property owners, first and foremost, those who attend in the audience and the council and city representatives. Uh, my name is Jane Owen. I choose not to give my address because we're not required to. You can do an open records request for it. To repeat some previous topics from the last couple of weeks, the city was notified a year ago in July, they are required to come into compliance with state statute from nineteen-ninety-six to have a historic ordinance. And so far, hasn't done it. To me, it looks like a gag order. A department was tasked to do it. It has not come before the council. The council didn't do any research, didn't bring it up, hasn't done anything in a year and a half. Uh, the buildings for the site were left all of summer twenty-twenty-one, not taken care of. The full winter, they were safe to use for fire training. And then all of a sudden, this spring, they're declared blighted. Looks a little odd. Traffic survey was in February. Don't know if school was in session at that time. Certainly wasn't peak for all the traffic events downtown. So doesn't seem to be equal to what we see day-to-day. No word yet or follow-up from anybody involved with the project on the testing for support structures. So it looks like it's gonna be another Surfside Florida, especially if it's built right up to the edge of the lake. And even though it was asked that it used to be able to be up to the lake for the setback, that doesn't mean it's right. It often flooded in the sixties, the seventies, the eighties, the nineties, and it will continue to flood. Many condo owners tend to be a certain segment of the population, draining extra services when they're here and not supporting local businesses when they're not here. Even if they are shopping and eating in local businesses, it's not produced in the city of Oconomock by people who live in the city of Oconomock. So it's not money staying here. Nothing on the building is LEED standard, even though the head architect is LEED certified. So it's not environmental. Nothing is net zero and nothing is carbon neutral. So we're spending the future now. It's not built with companies from the city of Oconomock, with employees from the city of Oconomock. Local is nice, it's not in the geographic city. I see it as knowingly, willingly, intentionally violating state law with non-compliance and blatant and flagrant disregard for the ordinances and the vow you took when you became representatives of this city to comply with the Constitution of the United States. And you are not willing to step up and do your job that you're paid for. Seems like the city bathrooms are self-fulfilling. If we sit there and patronize beverage and food establishments downtown, then what goes in has to come out. Those are the people who pay for it then. You supply the services, you choose to patronize those businesses, that's the facilities you use. Don't expect all the city residents to pay for your intake and your output.
I'd like you to wrap up, please.
Lastly, architecturally, it doesn't match the historic city of Oconomock from the eighteen-fifties, sixties, seventies. They are putting cream city brick into concrete. The items above the windows are not called arches architecturally, nor per the Architecture Commission, are they called eyebrows. It doesn't fit the city. What you're trying to do is grab at some tax base to pay off money you've already spent. I don't support your project.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments with regard to the Rockwell building projects? I do not have any more blue cards. Want to thank everybody for sharing their comments and their inputs for the council. We'll close this part of the public hearing for the Rockwell Part, uh, Planned Development Overlay District Open Public Hearing. We'll move on to our next public hearing. The next public hearing is for two thousand and twenty-three City of Oconomock Proposed Budget. The purpose is to hear public comment on the proposed two thousand and twenty-three budget for the city of Oconomock. Ms. Sullivan Murray.
Thank you. Sneak peek, there's only four slides. All right, so tonight, we're here after a lot of work by everyone involved, the staff, the department heads, the city council, the mayor, the city administrator, to bring you the two thousand and twenty-three, uh, City of Oconomock Operating Budgets. So when we get started with the budget, the first thing that we have to do is figure out, you know, how much revenue do we have to cover the expenses for two thousand and twenty-three? And one of the big things that we have to look at is levy. That's a large part of our revenues. So by law, our revenues for levy are only allowed to increase by net new construction. Our net new construction this year was two-point-three-four percent, which accounts for about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of increased levy. So once we started putting the budget together, I kind of went through how we got to where we are here real quick, but I want you to know that this is a lot of work with all of these different, all of these different sessions that we did. So when the departments put all of their proposals together and gave it to the city administrator and the mayor and I to take a look at, it was two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty dollars over our levy limit. So in that first column, are changes and reductions to the different departments that took place before the council even got the budget worksheets. Once we gave the council the budget, it was balanced, but it didn't meet the council priorities. So during the workshops, a council priority was to make sure that we had room in the budget for a full-time police officer. And they also didn't agree with one of the cuts that we had made earlier to our contingency budget and wanted to restore that to what it was in prior years. So in order to do that, council worked through the budget page by page to come up with additional reductions in, um, department budgets to help make room for this. Other things that happened were we did get our health insurance numbers and it was a savings of almost fifty-six-thousand dollars. And that gave us, that helped us out quite a bit. Another thing that came up later between the budget workshops was an increase, we got our, um, notice from the state. So our state aides did increase almost fifty-three-thousand dollars, almost fifty-four-thousand dollars this year. So those two items helped in that goal for the council quite a bit. During the third workshop, we did add that extra full-time police officer in. We did add back to the contingency. And after everything was done, these are the net changes to each department and the net change, percent change to each department over last year's budget. At the end of our workshop on October eleventh, the budget, the council voted six to one to move this budget forward to publish it in the paper for a public hearing and bring it tonight for adoption. What the two thousand and twenty-three operating budget does, I've said, adds that full-time officer, contingency is restored to its previous level, and it meets all state-required levy limits. The two thousand and twenty-three levy is fifteen-million-four-twenty-nine-nine-ninety-four, which does include the additional two-point-two-million-dollar fire referendum that was voted on in August of two thousand and twenty-two. The city-only portion of the budget, when we put together all of the budget and the equalized values and try to come up with mill rates, what we do is we take that whole bu, that whole levy amount and divide it by our equalized value. So if we look at last year's mill rate and this year's mill rate, the city-only portion and the increased values in the city reduced the mill rate by thirty-four cents. Now we add in the fire referendum. And as we knew when we voted on it, the fire referendum was gonna add about seventy-two cents to the mill rate. Actually, I think when we talked about it, it was eighty-one cents. But after the value increases and changes, it's at seventy-two cents per thousand on the mill rate. So the final effect to the mill rate is an increase of about thirty-eight cents per thousand over last year's, uh, over last year's mill rate. I'm gonna take a look at that in a way that's easier to read. So we take a look at, this was prior year levy. This is the current year, or two, two thousand and twenty-three levy, city-only portion, and then with the fire referendum added in. The mill rate for last year was four-seventy-one. It would be four-thirty-seven with just the city part of the increase and goes to five-oh-eight with what the fire referendum adds. So that adds thirty-eight cents per thousand is the effect on, on the mill rate. Boy, I didn't have a whole lot more there for you. But tonight, what, what we're gonna ask for you tonight is to approve the budget as amended by council in the workshops and to approve the levy of fifteen-million-four-twenty-nine-nine-ninety-four. And I think that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Until we bring it up again.
I have, uh, two cards this evening with regard to this item of the public hearing. And so we'll go ahead and get started. Floss Whalen.
The planet is at risk. Democracy is at risk. The doomsday clock, which measures the time to man-made global catastrophe, is at ninety-nine seconds to midnight. In the face of all those possible calamities, a small town's library seems of little significance. So why do we care so much? People were here several weeks ago, from nine-year-old Jordan to, if I can hang in there for two more months, ninety-year-old me, with a lot of people of different ages in between. Why do we care? Because ever since ancient Egypt assembled four-hundred-thousand papyrus scrolls in Alexandria, libraries have been the hallmark of civilization. They are the portals to the facts we require, the truth we seek, the wisdom we need. It is no surprise that Confederate states made it a crime to teach a slave to read. Nothing is more liberating than being able to search freely for the truth. Our local history shows that past Oconomock citizens have treasured their library. Today's citizens are no different. We are asking only that you restore thirty-five-thousand dollars to the library budget. This is a miniscule amount on a fifteen-million-dollar tax levy. It's about three bucks on a three-hundred-thousand-dollar property. You obviously have room under the state-imposed levy limits to do so. The city budget, as originally proposed to the council, was already well under those levy limits. So much so that it makes me nervous. What future councils can levy depends mostly on you, what you budget today. We have had some real growth in the city, but that growth is not going to go on forever. This council has had the resources to do many of the things you desired because previous councils understood this concept of not cheating the future and they did not tie your hands. You cannot predict the future, but you can protect it as your predecessors did. Your people are asking you to fund the library as initially proposed. It is a reasonable request. There is no budgetary reason not to honor it. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad Engstrand. Brad Engstrand.
Hi, Brad Engstrand. I live at 538 East Grove Street. So we were just doing a little Watertown bashing a minute ago, and I always wondered why Watertown raided a Carnegie library, but Oconomowoc didn't. And I always figured it was probably the wealth that was supposedly here. Well, those guys really didn't leave us that much. We didn't even get a library out of it. I'm a little bit surprised at sort of bashing the library's budget. You know, I just came from, my son lives in Olatha, Kansas. He works for Garmin, and Garmin is a, a lot of you are familiar with their software and everything that they build. And they've really taken care of the community, and they realize that, you know, smart people are what build a community, not just bars and restaurants. And I wondered to myself, gee, we're going to build Rockwell, and then what do we have to do? Hire a policeman to watch the people go and drink and eat at Rockwell? Why don't we have a library? His library that they just made in Olatha, Kansas, has a café in it. It has Maker Bots. It has laser cutters. It has embroidery machines. It has a ton of this stuff. It's got a special teen area where the teens could go in and play games, big screen TVs, and the teens are there. They're in there en masse. They love it. Isn't that what a library is for? It's for the community? It's for people? And you guys are killing it. It's shameful. It really, really is. Outside, there's playground equipment. There's, they have places that have solar panels to charge your cars. They have all of these things in their library. It's a community. It's a center. It's a focus. It's something for the teens. And what do we do? Build more bars and restaurants for drunks so we can hire more police. Doesn't seem sensible. Yes, all the kids can sit at home on the internet, the information highway, and do all of these things and talk to each other and communicate around the world, but what do they really want? They want to be with their friends. We need to make that a reality in Oconomowoc. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments with regard to the library? If you want to come forward, please. Thank you. If anyone else has any cards, if you'd please give them to Mr. Gallo at this time, that would really help us move things forward. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Kelly.
My name is Kelly Moran. I live at 1483 Crystal Lake Drive in the City of Oconomowoc, and I'm here to appeal to you to please find that $32,000 that we need for the library. I love the library. I use it personally and I use it professionally. I work with adults with disabilities. The library has been a place where I can take my people and we can volunteer and we can learn all of the social skills that people need to work out in the community. There's not a lot of businesses that welcome us with open arms. The library has been fantastic. I have witnessed so many things at the library that if you cut this staff, we're going to lose the opportunity to feed our community the way that they have. One of the things I want you all to remember is the help desk. The people that work at the help desk aren't just checking out books. I have heard them recommend social services, doctors, psychologists, place to get free food. It's amazing to me, the library is so vibrant, and if you make that little library cut their budget, you don't know what all you're cutting. And there's a lot of people that go in there to read, the newspapers that they can't afford to have delivered, the magazines that they can't afford to have delivered, and ladies in book clubs and men in book clubs that can't afford to buy the books, they rent the books. So there's so many reasons that we need the library. Please keep the library, this vibrant, lovely spot. Find it in your heart to take that $32,000 from somewhere else that doesn't really need it, because our library really needs it. Thank you.
Thank you. Abigail Engstrand.
Hello, my name is Abby Engstrand.
Lift the mic. There you go.
I live at 538 East Grove Street with that guy, and I wanted to just say, in support of the library and support of education, and that education, library, and the arts are, in my opinion, the best crime prevention. That's all.
Thank you. Jim Welch. Now, Jim, you only had, we're going to do two, and now you're doing three.
Trifecta.
If there was four, I'd probably.
You have the trifecta, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Jim Welch, 1130 Creekside Drive in Oconomowoc. And I wanted to echo what everyone else is saying, and I just came from the library. And anytime you go there, day or night, it seems like any, any day of the week, there's a buzz there, and I think it's kids having fun, kids learning, adults, I don't know about the fun part, but learning. And, and it would be just a shame to, if they had to, you know, cut down the hours or, or cut off staff. And I, I just don't see any scenario where cutting a budget doesn't do harm to this community.
Thank you very much. Without any further blue cards, we're going to go ahead and close this session of the public hearing for the. Please, in the future, if you can bring the cards up. You do this at every meeting. So next up, if you could please state your name.
Good evening, Jane Owen. That's my right to do it at what time I choose to speak. Thank you. It's in general about the city budget. I don't mind paying you a very handsome penny. We need proof that we're getting what we pay for. Let's get some software, for example, what they had at Job Development Center in Waukesha County, to prove productivity. Minimum correct typing speed of 40 or 50 words a minute. Not just familiarity or proficiency, but highly skilled at Microsoft Office 24/7, Chrome, Edge, workshop. Let's see what's getting done all eight hours of the day if you're working at your desk in City Hall. If council's in session, for example, giving yourself a day off in July with pay. This is not a PTO position where you sit here and not do compliance with state statute, but you give yourself a paid day off in July. It doesn't make sense. Prove to us we're getting what we're paying for. Then we'll talk budget numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further blue cards? Pipa Lindright? I'm not sure if I said that right. Great, thank you.
I'm Pipa Lindright. I live at 342 West Third Street in Oconomowoc, and I, I budget myself. We are in budgeting process at church right now. It's super fun. And I understand coming together and trying to make this budget work, and I want to commend you for the work you have done. But as Betsy came and said, I can meet you halfway. You cut 20, you cut $50,000 from the library budget, and she made a miracle and said, we can do services with 25 less. The gap between that and what you have in this current budget is $10,000. And I beg you, please, please find that money. Don't cut the services, because cutting the services means cutting the revenue that they get. It means cutting the resources that they share, and it cuts something incredibly precious from this community. So please, they have met you halfway. Please meet them the rest of the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other blue cards? I don't want to jump the gun. With no further blue, blue cards, the public hearing for the 2023 City of Oconomowoc Proposed Budget is now closed. We'll move on to our next agenda item, entertain a motion for approval of the minutes for November 1st, 2022.
Second, Kavieski.
I didn't hear who made the first.
Oh, I did. So moved Altman close.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Onto any further comments or suggestions from citizens. This can be on any topic. Our previous three topics were focused on the public hearings, so if you have any other comment you'd like to make, again, I'd love to have it on a blue card. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment?
Everyone, I'll give you the card in a minute when I read off my notes. Again, my name is Jane Owen. This is in regards to public access to committees, minutes, audio recordings, overlap of meetings. For example, sometimes in this last six months, at least three meetings weren't given the standard Friday afternoon publication for the following week. Some as little as 24 to 48 hours notice, so if you weren't on a computer, you wouldn't be paying attention to a committee that's coming up very quickly. Some of the meetings are held at Northeast Regional Park, out at the baseball stadium, for folks who live in the downtown, for folks who don't drive, kids not old enough to drive yet, folks who gave up their car. It's very hard to access these meetings. Lack of consistency and lack of transparency. Sometimes meetings overlap. One person can't be in two spots at the same time. It should be public rights, should be ordinance to protect public access, that the meetings cannot overlap. But we don't have anybody standing up for that. Transparency. Those minutes need to be put out, and some aren't available from committees four, five, six years ago. Still asking for them, haven't gotten them yet. They're just a summary. They're not accurate, as forthright as they should be. It's downright a hassle to get some of this information. Sometimes all I get is, sorry, I didn't call you back. One department head earlier this year didn't bother to call back at all after two phone calls. I'm not going to name names and get catty. It reflects on the person. It reflects on our city. We need to step up our game a lot to get to the starting line and look like the great City of Oconomowoc we all portend ourselves to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments for the council, again, on any topic? Yes, sir. And this would need to be on a different topic than.
Yes, it's just generally to the city. I'd like to congratulate the city because.
If you could, excuse me, just state your name and address again.
Brad Engstrand, 538 East Grove Street. Twenty-two years ago, when we were going to move here, my wife and I wondered where to go. We lived in Venice Beach, California, lived in Atlanta, I live in Phoenix, lived in downtown Chicago, Lincoln Park, we moved up here. I bought a business in Hartford. We decided not to live in Hartford because, A, they didn't have a library; B, the only place to eat in town sold T-shirts that said, "Shut up and drink." So I'd like to congratulate Oconomowoc on a great job done. We moved here. Thank you.
Thank you. A T-shirt could have been worse. Any further comments? Okay, we are going to move on to consent agenda items, entertain a motion for approval of the treasurer's report.
The move. Second, Mulder.
All in favor?
Aye.
That'll include all items, including treasurer's report and financials, correct? Okay, on to committee reports. Consider Act on Resolution 22-R3078 approving the 2022-2024 Audit Services Contract. Ms. Sullivan-Murray?
It was from what he just said.
You're going to have a busy night.
All right, so the, our contract with Baker Tilly ends this year, so we put out an RFP for auditing services. We followed the city's qualifications-based evaluation for the RFPs that came in. We received three. Inside your packet, you'll see the results and the ratings for this. So Baker Tilly came in first for technical points and then again for cost overall. So, I'm sorry, I lost my place here. So with that, staff is recommending that the city authorize the three-year contract with Baker Tilly for $123,000 with an option to renew for two years.
So this was brought to the committee prior to tonight's council meeting, it was earlier tonight, and they went through all the different options. I'd like to ask any council members, if you have any questions for Ms. Sullivan-Murray. Alderman Rozek.
Hey, Lori. In the committee meeting, I asked a question that, about using the same auditing services for a long period of time. How long have we used Baker Tilly at this point?
Five years.
Okay, so with this and the addition, it'll be another five years, right?
Up to five more years, yes.
And so my commentary, like, Alderman Ellis talks about this a lot, is, you know, have we used these people? Are they good? Obviously, we've used them, they're good, but also there's, there's that familiarity and that sameness. I think for auditing service, at least in my head, at some point, what I think we should do is, in the next five years, we have five years to come up with a policy on what, when we change that auditing service. If it's for two years, and then they can rebid again, but I'd like to get different eyes on our TIFs.
You mean two contract periods.
Correct, correct. It is, whether it's a contract period or just two years, I mean, I think we could just create a gap in there. But I, I don't want to be in a situation like we used to, and you mentioned it the other meeting, so this isn't from my own head, but our old auditing firm we used for 40 years, it's unacceptable for auditing. So I, I think you can't, if you use the same auditor over and over and over again, you're going to get the same audit over, over, and over again. And that familiarity breeds corruption, I think, or can, because it's, everyone becomes familiar and they just keep doing the same thing. So I'd like us to consider doing something maybe in the next year, too. Council decide on some policy on how we move forward with that future auditing services.
I think the finance committee could probably take that up and bring a proposal, you know, a proposed policy forward. You know, we have taken a step forward by having the RFP, you know, two different times now. And I like that we did it again, because even though we're recommending Baker Tilly again, it does make them go back and give us a, you know, give us a price that's competitive with what else is out there.
Well, there's a lot of things that, over the years, we hadn't bid on, you know, inspection services, there's a lot of stuff that we've fixed over the years, and this is one of them, so I appreciate your work on it.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
And we did talk about this in committee, that maybe at the point Baker Tilly wants to roll to 10 years, I understand what you're saying. Two years, I wouldn't agree to. They barely get up and going with two years, and.
No, I meant a two-year gap after 10 years.
Oh, the two-year gap, okay.
A two-year gap after 10 years.
Okay, because I was going to say, if you're taking it down to a two-year contract, you're not going to have a lot of good firms that will bid on that. The other thing is, I, I think you need, I understand what you're saying, but I think you need to be careful with saying that the process after that length of time can potentially breed corruption. It doesn't. And if you want to talk about what the audit process really is and how these partners are truly responsible and accountable for what they're doing, talk to me or Lori, because I, I think there's some other insight we can give you into the process of these audits, so.
Alderman Ellis.
Although I still agree with you that, you know, add about that 10-year part, but I don't think we should be saying it's because of potential corruption, so.
I, I don't think that Matt was actually referring to corruption. I think that was just a word that came to his mind at the time. I think it's more complacency, because what happens here is when we have a firm for a very long time, after a while, it's just same pair of shoes. And it's not that it's bad, but it's really good to every so often have a new, fresh pair of eyes looking at the situation. Not to say that we would go with them, but it also keeps that, that, in this case, the auditors, sharp, so that they understand that they have to always have a sharp pair, a new pair of eyes to make sure that they're doing the right thing for the city. I think that's what he was trying to say.
Thank you, Kevin.
Any other comments or questions for Lori? Alderman Spiegelberg?
I, I just want to take exception a little bit to, to what you guys have been saying, but we can talk about this later, because the staff on these audits is changing every year to two years, so we're constantly getting fresh eyes on our audit. We may have the same partner, but the staff that they're putting on these audits, they're, they're new eyes every year to two years, because the rest of the staff are moving up to senior positions or managerial positions. I mean, I'd like to have the conversation, but I just want some understanding, too, that, you know, we're in really good shape with Baker Tilly for these 10 years. If we want to go in some other direction, that's great, but I don't want to diss them in the process, you know?
Alderman Rozek.
The point wasn't to diss them. The point was to create, like we've done with RFP processes for city projects and construction projects, inspection services is create that process to control it. Prior to what Lori started here, which is doing the RFP for this, we had the same firm for 40 years. Let's presume they. Let's presume they build $100,000 a year. We paid one firm $4 million to audit us for 40 years. That does breed complacency. There may be some change of staff, but it's the same company over and over again, looking at the same books, working with the same city staff. So corruption may have been the wrong word. I think Kevin corrected me properly to say complacency. And that's what we tried to avoid with our RFP changes years ago, and that's why I think we should look at this policy and what we do. Again, it was a two-year gap after 10 years. And you change auditing firms, they can come back and rebid. I think the RFP bidding we have done, what we put in place five years ago, perfect, genius, because we actually have people bidding for that project. And we had, what, these guys were within a few points from each other, and like three grand. So that process is obviously working, and we've got quality firms bidding, so.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
Rozek, so moved.
Second, Ellis.
Any further discussions or questions? Call roll, please.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Alderman Rozek?
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Clothe?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
And our next item, consider act on resolution 22-R3075 for wastewater treatment rate adjustment. Ms. Sullivan-Murray?
I know, I'm going to be coming back up here a lot, but that's okay.
Can we just get you a chair, one of those little, like, barber shop chairs?
Okay. So we talked about this at utility committee and at committee of the hall already, but the wastewater rate change for 2023 is going to be about 7.5%. That amounts to a rate change of about $2.05, or a little over $24 a year. The 7.5%, I say, we change the wastewater utility rates generally every year, about 3%, or a little more than 3%, but this year, the 7.5% really reflects us skipping a year because of the large water rate increase that we had. So this is a 7.5% rate increase. All of the rate structure and tables are in your packet. This needs to be voted on by council. This does not go to the PSC. This is a council rate change.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
The move.
Second.
Any further discussions?
Then me.
Any further discussions or comments? Again, for the audience, they've worked a lot on this. This is not a very, a quick, hey, we're going to increase your rates. This has to be done. Call roll, please.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Alderman Rozek?
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Clothe?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Yep, aye.
Next item, consider act on the adoption of the 2023 utility budgets.
Right. Again, the utility budgets went through thorough review by the utility committee and the committee of the hall. Their summary is on the screen here. So what you see is, the rate of return for the water and the electric are both decreasing right now. We did have a water rate increase last year, and there's another part of that increase that's coming, but not until well number eight is finished, which we project will probably be the end of 2024. For the electric utility, we currently have a rate application in. We expect there to be a rate increase mid-year in 2023. That's about a 5% increase. There'll be more information on that once the PSC goes through the application and makes their recommendation. For the wastewater, you can see the rate of return. We actually have a very small negative rate of return for the wastewater in 2023. With the rate increase that we're doing, we don't expect that to continue. But for the wastewater, the main reason why that is high right now is because of the delayed increase that we had last year, and because of the large amount of capital projects that they have going on. The wastewater, however, sits in a very good financial position, and we can do this for a year.
One comment for the audience, again, I'm not sure if you've heard it published, but We Energies is increasing their rates considerably higher than what we are doing here in the city. Plus, you already get about a 25% lower rate than our competitive electric utilities. So it's actually a real gem of Oconomowoc, something a lot of people don't know. So that rate increase, as is posted here, is really, really small. Plus, 85% of our infrastructure and our main cabling is underground. How many times do you really get, are you, do you have power outage? Very few in the city of Oconomowoc. So I'd like to ask for any questions or comments for Ms. Sullivan-Murray. Sorry.
That's okay.
Alderman Rozek?
Yeah, I mean, one of the reasons we have to do rate increases across the board for some of these items is to create that rate of return, so that we can put money in reserves, we can do the large projects, whether it's the new digester cover for wastewater, or it's burying more underground cable, putting in transformers, those things have to be done. And if we don't do those things, and we don't save for that ahead of time, we'll actually be backwards. So these rates have to go up periodically to make, to make sense.
That's correct.
Thank you for the comments, Mary, you're spot on. The underground-
I'm right?
Yeah, well, I mean, the underground cables is why we don't have the power outage. You see power outages in other areas, and we just don't have as many, because we've been working for a decade to bury as many lines as we can.
And that's, that's pretty incredible, and something I didn't know several years ago, and please share with your friends. Alderman Ellis?
Yeah, I was going to say that over the last several weeks, I know that there's been places very close that have had power outages for not just one or two hours, but like six or seven hours while I'm watching my television. Yeah, it's a good thing. Working out, working out.
There you go, there you go. I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
Go move, Kavieski.
Rozek, second.
Any further discussions or questions? Call roll, please.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Alderman Rozek?
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Clothe?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
On to plant commission items. Consider act on the certified survey map for the land combination for the Rockwell Development project located at 121 to 135 and part of, excuse me, part of 111 North Main Street. Mr. Gallo?
Thank you. We talked about the certified survey map a little bit earlier in the public hearing presentation, but it is to combine four lots plus part of the Village Green into one lot. That's really the purpose of this document. The applicant is Rockwell Development. They are the owner of .37 acres, and the city is the owner of .25 acres. And we've heard about that. Someone spoke at the public hearing, asking, you know, what's the compensation, et cetera. But please remember that that land that is being incorporated into the project is going to be remaining public. It's the public parking lot portion. So yes, it is being incorporated. They need the land underneath it for the underground parking, but the land on top is going to be a public easement that would be drafted. So if this is acted on favorably, one of the conditions of a CSM, usually we don't have many conditions on a CSM document, would be, though, that that parking lot easement must be approved by the common council prior to the recording. You also must approve the transfer of the property, because obviously, they don't own this, so that's, it's, it's, it would not get signed and recorded unless you guys act on the transfer of the property as well as the easement.
Alderman Ellis?
Okay, first question I have is-
Can you bring the microphone a little closer, please?
Oh, wow, somebody actually asked me this. Okay. It's snowing pretty good out there right now. All right. My question here is this. Back years ago, how close did those buildings that were on the four corners, that before the Village Green and things on those lines, come as far as close to the water's edge? Because I saw that on the one diagram, that we had some light poles that were in the water. So help me understand that. I've got a few questions.
The, you're right, there was light poles actually in the water, and there was a boardwalk that went, kind of levered over the water, and, and those would be a zero setback. As far as buildings themselves, those buildings out there now, I would say they would be less than the 45-foot setback that we have on the books right now. The buildings that were on the Village Green, there was an old hotel on the, I don't know the answer to that. That was, predates me. But, you know, now, today, we have a 45-foot setback, but there are, are some buildings that are existing that are less than 45 feet. And we have, this parcel that is in question is under the jurisdiction of the city. It was in the city prior to 1982. The DNR has no regulations. They have land disturbance permits and things like that. And the DNR would get involved in the shoreland restoration and the, and the piers. But, but the building setback is a, is a city, a local jurisdiction. So we control the setback on this property.
I just, I just find it quite interesting that there's some poles, light poles, that are already in the water there, which tells me that at some point, we had had that zero setback. And then somewhere in that area, in that time span between now and then, we made some, some decisions. My other question is, well, I won't answer it yet. I'll let anybody else talk.
Okay. Next up is Alderman Kavieski, and then Alderman Douglas.
You got the right slide up then, so thank you. We talked about the surface lot with easement for city parking associated with that. The terms of this will require the further agreement of that easement with the CSM. Words matter. Reduction of green space, whatever, has been discussed previously. It's not a reduction of green space in actuality, right? Because there were slides provided that the actual green space itself is actually expanded with a rework of the Village Green area. The 18 feet of lot space on the surface could have remained green, could have, could have been turfed. But we recommended to increase the amount of parking there. So we had options. And the concern for the additional activity and just parking in general on North Main Street isn't going to be fixed with this, but it's going to be helped with this as a result of that increased parking. So I just want the public to know and understand and realize that this is not a developer that's forcing something on us. This is not giving away something that we had for nothing in return. We are retaining the parking. We are retaining the rights to that. As a city, we'll be able to regulate that parking in length of time for those slots. Those become inventory for our citizens, guests, and to support not only the businesses there, but the events that occur on the Village Green. I know there is some concern about what would happen with the German Christmas market. The German Christmas market will remain at the Village Green. These enhancements may actually help to facilitate additional growth and reconfiguration opportunities associated with that. And I think one of the reasons this development is going there is because of that vibrant, event-driven corner. So all of those things, I just want to make sure the, the public realizes as we work through this process that it's been thought about, discussed, and it's been a good public-private partnership, not a developer-driven mandate.
Alderman Douglas?
It's interesting to say words matter. You're talking about an increase of green space. However, that's basically by taking out sidewalks. We could do that anyways, and the green space would be more than what they're proposing. Ultimately, the reason why we have to do this, if I understand correctly, is because they need underground parking. If they don't have that much underground parking, they're not going to meet requirements for their building they're proposing. Ultimately, because of their design, building, that they want to place there, is what's causing that additional parking and the loss of space to the Village Green.
As a, as a point of order, item 9A is actually about just the recombination of the lots and the surface. Oh, I suppose, yeah, I suppose.
It's okay.
Well, no, I just, I felt like we were getting into like this development plan, which is kind of really the next big-
This is just a certified survey map, and I think we're still staying focused enough. Any other comments or questions with regard to this? Alderman Shellpepper?
Statement, I'm going to vote against the land combination. I don't, the, the city currently owns that parking lot. Under the agreement, we will no longer own the parking lot. That's all I need to know, and that's why I'm not going to support it. And I also don't support the reduction of green space, regardless of how we want to frame it and, you know, sugarcoat it. So I'll be voting against it.
Thank you. Alderman Ellis? Again, we're focused on the certified survey map.
So I guess my, my concern is with the parking. Should I wait until we go to the next B, or should I?
The parking lot is incorporated into the certified survey map?
Yes, it is.
So I think if you have a comment with regard to parking, now is the appropriate time.
All right, thank you. So my concern is, we're going to go ahead and we're going to take some green space away, and we're going to put 11 parking spaces, of which, one of them really is not usable. However, there are ways in which you can kind of finagle it so that all 11 can be used. My understanding that in the case of major events, such as the German Christmas party, oh, party, the German Christmas. And it's a party, it's a party. And the other Maxwell Street days and things on those lines, that that lot is going to be closed, which thus means that there will be no parking there. I don't think that those 11 spots are really going to do, or we're taking a little Band-Aid and we're putting on a gaping hole. I, I think that it's a bigger issue that needs to be resolved, and resolved by this, by this body outside of this project. Now, I had a conversation with one of the individuals that called me, and I did ask them, I said, "If we decide not to have that additional parking, is that a deal breaker?" And their answer to me was, "No, it is not." So I'm really having, guys, we really have to sit down and finally just say, the biggest problem we have is not putting up buildings. It's finding parking spaces for these people who want to come into Oconomowoc to enjoy the things at which we have here. And so I think that we need to really consider on whether or not we should, am I on three minutes? Is that what it is?
No, I just want to keep us focused on this topic. I think your point's well taken. I think we all agree.
Can I, can I finish?
Sure.
Thank you. I, I think that we really need to consider whether or not we really need those 11 spots. Thank you.
Alderman Altman-Clothe?
I feel like I might get in trouble for going off topic, but I think on the day-to-day, the 11 extra spots are going to be a huge value to the city. And that lot right now, regardless, we don't use that lot for, when we do have bigger events, that lot is gone. So that's not changing. Yeah, that's it. I lost my train of thought.
Alderman, Alderman Kavieski?
So this is a legal question. With the easement associated with the surface lot to the city, there's, there are rights to that, correct? We're not losing complete ownership of that. We have-
It will not be an easement. It will be a lease.
Okay.
A 99-year lease that for all intents and purposes, we will own it.
Hello.
Oh, there he is.
So we will essentially be the owner of that property for 99 years. We'll have complete control over it. Unlike the other lease we have in that regard, I understand that we'll actually probably be plowing it as well and maintaining, you know, the surface, obviously, completely. We have complete control over it. So it, no difference for 99 years whether it is actually owned by somebody else. We will have complete control over it.
Okay, so that was one, one part. The other part was in regards to the requirement that the development has for the underground parking. Part of what we've gone through in discussions was- Part of what we've gone through in discussions was why the building is the size it is. And part of the reason that is, is for the increment to support the public infrastructure elements, which is all the stuff that we talked about, right? So if we don't want the, and everybody's got a different side to that, right? If you don't want the finish of the boardwalk, if you don't want the bathroom, if you don't want the rework of the Village Green, if you don't want any of that stuff, then they could go ahead and build what they want and the space that they have without the sizing. But if we want those elements, that increment needs to be there, which is why the parking is required associated with the underground side of it.
Alderman, Alderman Cloth, sorry.
So going off of what Alderman Ellis said about asking the developer if we had to do the extra parking lot, and I just asked Ellis this, not that I expected him to have the answer, so I don't know if this is a Mr. Screamer or Mr. Gallo question, but hypothetically, if we got rid of, you know, slots eight through 21, that becomes green space, you know, we go back to green space. So now we have to reconfigure the in and out on Main Street, then wouldn't we have to push the driveway closer to the building, which then makes that less safe than like the sightlines with the sidewalk?
Can somebody answer that for us, please?
It would put the driveway where it currently is, approximately.
Well, no, because Alderman Ellis asked the developer, do we have to have that? Like, so couldn't that go back to Village Green space, which then would change where the driveway is, which would then make it less safe?
Jason, can you go back to the slide that shows the overlay of the existing parking lot? Okay, so in this drawing, the lighted shaded areas with the curb and the bumpout, that's the existing parking lot right now. And then what you see as being added is from the line that Jason's showing now to the sidewalk.
Well, I know that.
Yeah, so that, so if we, if we're not getting that space, then we'd essentially be going back to approximately what's there now.
Commissioner, Alderman Douglas, sorry.
Jason, where does the city property actually end? Is that current lot there public now, or is it owned by Rockwell?
The city property ends right at the building, right up here. We own the alleyway and the parking lot. So the alleyway is kind of like right through here, and then this is the lot. So the city owns, you know, this is a quarter of an acre, and that's, we own all of this.
Not on proposing it, but technically we can move that entire lot and take it out and make it all green space. Not proposing that, but I'm saying that we'd have the right to do that.
The issue too is the underground parking. If you want the underground parking, you're not going to have, having green space on top of it.
I'm just trying to figure out where, how far we actually own. So it's actually right up to the building?
The blue area.
So if I hear this right, the underground parking is associated with what we're doing up above ground. Is that what I hear?
Yeah, this picture's a nice illustration of that.
Oh, yeah, look, okay.
Just a second. Alderman Spiegelberg.
Well, it's kind of a clarification of that. So if we did not give them all of this extra parking or space, would that prevent them from doing the underground parking?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. Then I'm probably going to be voting against this just because I've always been an advocate for so many people out there who have said, "Why can't they get this project done with four stories?" Now, we're at 69 and a half, and we're at another, at least 10 feet above with mechanicals. So my voice is going to be for the many, many, many people who have said, "We love this project. It's fantastic." But we don't like seeing it at the mass that it's at. So I'll be voting against the CSM.
Yeah. And so let's, again, folks, we're working right now on the CSM.
Right.
So great comments and stuff, but let's try to keep focus there. Alderman Rozek.
But this can, this is part of that.
Yeah, yeah, I think it is. I mean, the CSM is going to combine these lots and allow them to put the underground parking. I think where we've been talking around is where the extra row of carses could go back to green space. It doesn't have to be that extra row parking. I don't think that's the smart idea. I think we should create parking if we're putting a restaurant and we're putting a bakery or deli there. It doesn't make sense to not take the opportunity to add a little additional parking with about 19 feet of space. We've got sidewalk there already, we've got parking there already. So that's why I'm in favor of it. I think one of the, one of the things we go back to on creating the CSMs here tonight and combining them and then working on the planned overlay is, we've worked with this developer for about a year, eight months, on the look, on the feel, on what we need, what we want, and this is kind of where we're at. And I think it, at this point, it would be tough for us to say, I mean, we can say no if we want to, but then what developer moving forward is going to come in and spend a year working with us, coming to 15 meetings, creating these proposals, creating these designs, just to have, kind of at the last minute, us pull the plug? So, you know, we could have, we could have said we don't want green space four months ago, or the parking. You know, we could have said we don't want, you know, anything associated with this four months ago, and we haven't done that. I think they probably still do the project if we turn those parking spots into green space, so that's, you know, we got to decide that. But I don't know that that decision is with regard to the CSM, so.
Alderman Mulder.
I'm, I am ultimately in favor of this, and I'm in favor of the land combination. I do believe, as I've stated before, that the, this is a difficult area to build on for many of the reasons that have been discussed, and so that's why the mass of the building is there, which then requires the parking underneath because of the mass of the building for the entire thing to be profitable for the developer. Right now, within, without a project like this, a building could go up there, up to 50 feet, so it could be three stories. It could abide by all the setbacks, and we could end up with what is largely somewhat an unfunctional green space right now with the large retaining ponds in it, with a, continue to have no boardwalk with lights in the middle of our lake. And so for me, I would agree, Karen, that I would prefer to see it lower. I'm going to, but it makes sense to me why it has to be this, this size. And I do think that, to your point, Matt, if this isn't the kind of project we want, then those kind of amenities are not going to be something that we're ever going to be able to put in. I respect your comment that the city could get it done. The boardwalk alone is a million dollars. It's not, it's never going to get done unless it's part of a TIF district. That's just the simple truth of it. Our levy is never going to support that. We're not going to take a million dollars out of our reserves to put in 100 feet of boardwalk. So this is the way to get these things done, and there's a trade-off, there's no doubt about it, and I've heard from lots of constituents, but I think it's the right project.
Alderman Kavieski.
Kind of along that line, Alderman Mulder, the boardwalk that is there right now was as a result of Falla Lake Village TIF, as well as the OAF and the GMF grant monies, and the city did kick in some money. But without those dollars, that boardwalk doesn't exist. And I have not met one person that doesn't love that boardwalk. And I have not met one person that doesn't agree that without that boardwalk, the downtown isn't what it is today. So the completion of that boardwalk and the vision, if you take a look at, you know, the walkability from city beach across the street into the boardwalk and down Pleasant, that's all part of that master plan. That becomes real. Nothing in the city happens overnight. It all takes a long time. And we're moving down that path, and I think it's notable for that. The other, the other thing with the parking, we have, we have worked as a council for years to increase the parking on North Main. We've taken the loading zone area and made it a loading zone until 4:00 PM, and then you get two additional spots. We took the turnaround and put an additional, I don't know.
Three?
Three?
I'm thinking three.
Three what?
Spots.
Three spots.
Taking with the turnaround.
That was, that was, no, I think that was like eight, if you take a look at both sides. And that was controversial. Everybody was like, that's, why would you take her on? Nobody's lost their mind. Everybody figures out how to turn around if they want to, they use that parking lot. And those additional parking spaces are being used by those who are now going to the retail and to Freshbake. And this will help with that. And that's how we get down the road. We incrementally take the spots that we, that make sense and that, and that help to utilize that area as the heart of our downtown and the heart of the country, so.
Like to entertain a motion?
We've got one more question there before we make a motion.
Back in.
Whoa, 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 whoa. I'm sorry, there was a, there was a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Alderman Shellpepper made a comment first.
Yeah, just, the question is, the land that the developer will be buying from this, the land that currently the city owns that will be under lease to the developer, will that count towards their state formula for boat slips? So will they own that land to a point where they'll be able to add more boat slips because of that land portion?
I believe that they've already worked out with the DNR their authorized number of slips without that land being included. Is that true?
I got three slips.
John, if you want to come up, if you could please identify your name and company for the record.
Sure. John Coats with MSI General Appeal Box 7, Oconomowoc, Wisconsin. Regarding the boat slips that is governed by Chapter 30, it's a DNR individual permit application. We've had two meetings with the DNR to answer the specific question. It's a calculation based on shoreland that is owned by any property owner. So if the land in, if the CSM is approved as shown, the calculations would be based off of 173 feet, which is the meander line that is shown on the CSM as presented tonight. So that would be the.
You're saying it's going to be more than what you've had conversations with about the DNR?
The, the conversations with the DNR have been, there's a calculation that's based on the length of shoreland.
What was the calculation you were working off of?
The calculation we were working off previously with the six boat slips that are shown was a shorter calculation than what is currently shown. So I believe the current calculation.
So how come you guys weren't transparent about that? You knew you were going to want to take that land, that public parking piece. Why weren't you clear upfront that you actually are going to have eight, not six slips then?
No, I don't think it was a matter of being transparent. It was a matter of reflecting the way that this was being put together as far as if it was going to be a transfer or an easement. So there was a further clarification that was requested to look at, and I believe that there is an opportunity with 173 feet, if you look at the calculations, that there could be up to eight slips if it was approved by the DNR. That all has to go through the Chapter 30 permit process.
So in that situation, there'd be six slips for the, for you, the owner, and then two, for the owner, and then two for the city, public spaces? Is that correct?
I would have to defer to the developer on that, but I believe that was, yeah.
But inside of four for you, it would be six and two for the public, correct?
That could be. The boat slips were left out of the TIF calculations. That was not a part of the boardwalk. So that was always, from the beginning, part of the developer-funded part of the project. And the DNR has said all of that would have to go through their permit process. None of that has been started yet. It's just been.
Right. But the reason you're getting it is because of city land.
I could see your point on that, sure. I understand what you're asking on that question.
I just, I wanted to point that out because, and obviously it's not going to change most people's minds here, but it's just another situation of, there's always more information. There's more things that come to light, there's extenuating circumstances. Here's another one. We're going to have an extra two boat slips that we weren't planning on. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Kavieski.
Before you sit down, does this reflect the additional two slips?
We haven't shown any of the extra boat slips on any of the proposals. Again, none of that's been.
It's not been, it's not been approved by the DNR, nor has it been.
None of that's even been started, no.
But it's a state formula.
It's a formula that's in there, Chapter 30 permit regulations.
Yes, so I guess, I appreciate you bringing this up. I think it's worthwhile in discussion as it applies to the CSM. If, if you were to choose to extend that pier out and get the additional slips that could be entitled to you with the additional shoreline, is there a part of that formula in Chapter 30 that dictates how far you can go into the body of water with the pier that may limit that?
Yeah, our, our understanding, again, with comments with the DNR, is that all individual piers on all bodies of water in the state of Wisconsin go through the same permit process. As far as length into the water, I couldn't speak to that. I'd honestly, I don't know. I'd have to get the DNR involved. They've just given us the feedback for this particular project. There are two types of pier permits that can be approved. One is an individual pier permit, the other is a fishing pier permit. And so those are the two piers that have been shown.
So I just, again, there's, there's, doesn't sound like there's any ulterior motive or any, any, anything that's behind the closed door, and you're like, okay, now we can, we can do this. You don't even have those answers. If it comes about, it comes about, but I do think there's some regulation in regards to how, how far you can go into a body of water with a particular pier, and there's nowhere on here, because of the boardwalk that I see, that you could add two slips off the boardwalk outside of that. So if they're like, oh, you can't go out any further, that conversation is done, and that's yet to be determined.
Yeah, the location of the boat slips that has been shown has been in compliance with setbacks and other calculations that the DNR takes into account as far as where you can place it. You know, you can't encroach on a neighboring property to some extent, so, but again, all that, that process would all have to happen still with the DNR.
And we have a 99-year lease on a property that we then control, and the boardwalk is owned by the city. So if you're going to try to come off of the boardwalk anywhere else with additional slips, that would be a no-go.
Boardwalk will not be owned by the city.
Right.
It will be a pedestrian easement.
Yeah, but it would require our approval?
The boardwalk will be built in, you know, under the terms of the developer's TIF agreement, and there will be a perpetual easement for the public to traverse it.
Any further questions? Comments? Like to entertain a motion?
Go move Kavieski.
Back in, Alderman Cloth.
Any further comments or questions? Call roll, please.
Alderman Douglas.
Nay.
Alderman Rozek.
Aye.
Alderman Alderman Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Kevin, or Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Nay.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Nay.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Onto our next item. Next item is Consider Act on Ordinance 22-01041 to create a planned development overlay district for the Rockwell Development located at 121 to 135 North Main Street. Mr. Gallo.
I won't have many comments. We, the last item created the site. We held a public hearing. We had several speakers for and several against this project. This does create the planned development flexibility for the project, the zoning exemptions, and in return, you're getting the public benefits. The Plan Commission and our Architectural Commission both already acted on this. The architecture's been approved, and the site plan was approved by the Plan Commission contingent upon getting approvals of the zoning by this body. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Like to open up for discussion. Alderman Kavieski.
The TIF is attached to this portion of the approval, correct? Or no?
No.
The, the TIF was acted on the project plan by the Plan Commission, but there's a 30-day window, so that's going to come back, come back before you in December.
Okay.
Yeah, December.
This is an ordinance and that you're acting on on this item, and this does require two readings unless the first one's waived or the second one's waived.
Alderman Douglas.
Regal, can you go to the slide that talks about the terrorist stuff on Gallo, can you go to the slide that talks about the terrace stuff on top of the building? The different heights, where they're going to be located? So the height structure for the, I don't know if you call it teal, green, is 14'4'. But the height of the building is 69'6', right? So that makes it 84. But in our paperwork, it says a height of 80.
That, that tip is higher than where it's built.
I think it's, how old were they measuring that 14'4'? There's a parapet, so the roof is actually 266. So there's a little bit of confusion there. But the top of the elevator shaft is a total of, is 80 feet, four inches.
Continue. Continue.
Are you done?
This is a totally separate topic, but it's, you know.
Wasn't the elevator shaft, didn't Western Lakes have something to do with that?
Well, I know an elevator is required for this type of construction, and the elevator does exit on the top floor, and then there's, there's stuff that has to go above the elevator. So this is all.
I guess what I'm getting at is the height of that is kind of out of the developer and MSI's control, and that was more.
There's building codes that have to have certain number of elevators and, and that there is a requirement to have an elevator once you get up at this level.
I'll go to Alderman Kavieski and then back over here.
This is very similar, and we've covered this before, but it's worth covering again, I think. This is very similar to Fowler Lake Village in regards to its, its height and then mechanicals associated with that. I think it's about the same height from the roof line to the mechanicals in both situations. So if somebody's trying to get a visual sense of what that means and what that looks like as they're walking down the street, it's about the same.
Yes, it's similar. They have terraces and elevator shafts and other apparatuses on top of their roof that protrude higher up approximately, same heights, approximately, within inches, kind of.
Alderman Rosick.
That was actually kind of my question. I think Fowler Lake Village's mechanicals on that tops out around 79 feet, so it's pretty, pretty close to where they're at here. What, with Fowler Lake Village, I don't, Fowler Lake Village was built after we did, I believe, the new downtown overlay, correct?
Yes.
And they don't have, I don't, when I look at Fowler Lake Village, I don't see a 10-foot setback, the step back at the third floor. Is, is, it looks similar, what they've done to what they're asking for, I guess. Do we give them exemptions too on some of that?
No, the Fowler Lake Village is not a PD, and that was, that was actually in the works before we adopted the code.
Okay, that's why. But they, they kind of opted to do that third or fourth floor. They kind of did step it back so that they could be.
We were addressing the ordinance at the same time that they were coming forward, and they, we determined it was kind of in the spirit of what we were drafting, but did we review it specifically for the standards? No. It was actually predates the, that ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry. The, the County Council does have the ability to give variances for the shoreline setbacks as well, correct? I mean, we have that ability to do for projects, correct?
Well, it's not a variance, it's an exemption from the code.
I mean, I was here, I was here on council when we drafted a lot of the downtown overlay that we're talking about with the, the step backs. The, what we, the, the reason for drafting it the way we did was because of the complaints about the Worthington Building being right on the sidewalk, no architectural, you know, relief, straight up and down for three or four or five stories. I don't think that when, when we pass these type of ordinances that we should be so rigid as to believe there should be no flexibility ever when you're looking at these type of ordinances. Certainly, the height is higher than some people would like, but whether it's the step back or it's the height, if we're getting a variety of public amenities, we shouldn't be so inflexible as to say we can never, ever, you know, give an exemption to those things. I think what they've tried to do here is meet the spirit of that regulation. Is it exact? No, it's not. Neither would, neither Fowler Lake Village wouldn't have fell on into those overlay. A lot of the buildings downtown wouldn't, and we gave exemptions for some of the other buildings as well, so.
Alderman Douglas.
Talking about step backs, I know you said the Architectural Committee basically said they're in the spirit of the ordinance by their canopies and overhangs. What did they say about the lakeside being three stories straight up with no step back, no audience over top? They address that?
They were very complimentary of the architecture, and they said this is something they feel was in the spirit of the code. I don't recall the exact verbiage that they said, but they, they really thought this was a well-designed building.
I guess to Alderman Rosick's point, you know, talking about not being rigid, I would go on the other side and say we're not being rigid enough considering, I don't know what zoning ordinance they're actually following besides the zero setback from the street, so.
Alderman Kavieski.
There is some, some discussion or concern about environmental impact on this with the Village Green and with this particular property being developed. I would, my, my thought based on previous discussion, and I'd like either confirmation or, or further input, with the cleanup of this site, it's actually an improvement for the environmental impact, because now you're meeting all current requirements for EPA and all the other fun stuff. And if there is any contaminants in that property that is being developed, is being removed, those are all good things, I believe. Am I interpreting that correctly, that the development of the site, if there are any challenges associated with it, will ultimately leave this community with a, a better property?
I can, I can speak to two responsibilities we would have as the general contractor. We've got a responsibility to the Wisconsin DNR to treat all stormwater in relation to Fowler Lake. The 2017 boardwalk project, for example, greatly improved the treatment of water that was previously running almost directly into the lake from the parking lot. This site currently is in the same sort of orientation where runoff from the city parking lot and the privately-owned parking lots run right into Fowler Lake. That will no longer be allowed. It will all be treated. I believe there's empirical data that there was significant water quality improvements when the boardwalk was completed in 2017. This would follow that. So in relation to the water and the site, there is DNR-governed regulations that would need to be followed. In regards to the site itself and some of the comments that have been made tonight, there was a Phase 1 environmental study done by the current developer. As any project progresses, if you encounter things as you dig, there are, again, state-regulated requirements and processes that have to be followed by any general contractor and especially by us. So we recognize all those challenges in this project and are committed to following the right regulations and processes that are already in place. So I don't know if that answers your question specifically, but we do recognize we've got a water environmental impact that we need to follow, and there's also a site development impact that will need to be followed during the process.
I think you did address both, and you mentioned 2017 Village Green when bongs came down and that green space was ultimately opened up to the event space that we know it today and enjoy it today, that maybe Mr. Duffy wouldn't know more specifically. But I don't think the Village Green was, was, it was graded, but it wasn't envisioned and completed to the tune of what we're looking to do now and actually completing the Village Green through planning. Is that fair?
Part to what you see there today, there actually used to be a 1947 easement, which actually connected the parking lot we have today to the access point that is adjacent to the former AJ's. We did not own the lakefront of Fowler Lake. So as we've moved through redevelopment in downtown and have acquired property through the development of the Worthington and all sorts of other things that have happened here in the community to implement a downtown plan, we have gained waterfrontage in the city and added that green space.
But we, we now have, with this project, we'll have greater access to the lake as a result of this with the boardwalk being completed.
But our goal from the 2004 downtown plan to extend the boardwalk or connection pedestrian from behind City Hall all the way to City Beach, and we're fairly close.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
You can go to Rosick.
Alderman Rosick.
Boy. I, I think I'm ready. Yeah, I am. Just a few points. One, and this is on page 78 of our packet, this building does meet our city's comprehensive land use plan from 2050. And while it's true that it could be mixed use whether it was four stories or five stories, as Mr. Douglas said to me, whispered in my ear, importantly, you know, during the debate when the developer was talking to us about what this vision could look like, what this could be, we asked them at length, probably 15 different times, can you do the public improvements? Can you do the look? Can you do everything that we want done and that, and the tax benefit and everything else at four stories? And they said unequivocally, no. So like Matt, Matt Mulder said, you know, there's got to be a little bit of compromise in there. The other things we're doing here, and there were some comments about it, so I think we should address it. There won't be flooding there because there was a plan that came up about the extra fill. So they're going to stop the flooding. The environmental runoff is going to be fixed. And at the end of the day, I, I think this is going to be a good project for the city and despite some of the, the changes that they've requested. The other thing I'll, I'll note on page 78 is they actually, with regard to the bulk requirements, comply with most of them. The, the big things they're requesting is the height change and the shoreline change. And we've given variety of shoreline changes for a variety of projects throughout the city. So that's not unusual, especially when you're building this close to lakes on Ithmises, et cetera. It's, it's going to, it's going to happen again because we're building on very small sites that are right next to lakes. I did have one other point, but I, I forgot it now.
Did you lose your train of thought?
I did lose my train of thought. It must be infectious over here.
One final thing, and then I'm ready to vote.
No, I have something then.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
I just want to tell Jeff and Dirk and all of their team members, I think this is a fantastic project. It really is. I am, you know, I'm a little disappointed for my constituents that we wouldn't be able to make this work at, at four stories. I understand we would be giving up some of our public amenities, and, and I'm excited as, as Jeff knows, that was my number one complaint in District 1, trying to get rid of the blight in that area. But I will still be voting against it and keeping my vote consistent with my loyalty to many, many constituents who love the project, don't mind if we would give up some of the public amenities to potentially keep this at the four stories, so.
Alderman Kavieski.
My final comment is ultimately, I think this vote is going to be very reflective of the community. I think there'll be some who have concerns, there'll be some who very much support it. And if this passes, everybody will get a chance to enjoy the amenities that come along with it.
Like to entertain a motion. Alderman Shellpepper.
One last, one last comment. I'll, I'll be voting against it because it goes contrary to the downtown overlay plan that was just adopted within the last couple of years. And as much as Alderman Rosick wants to point to other exceptions we've made to the downtown overlay plan, I don't think he could point any specific ones out that weren't already grandfathered in based on when they were constructed or already in construction. That overlay plan wasn't only adopted by this council, it had lots of community input, lots of feedback, lots of time dedicated to identifying what we as a community wanted to see in the downtown, and I'm going to stay consistent with it and vote against it, vote, vote against this, these exceptions. We hear about how important these plans are. You know, we heard from, from Mr. Duffy about the comprehensive, you know, land use plan or the downtown land use plan. I always hear about these plans, how important they are and how, how we need to follow them until it doesn't kind of fit with what the city wants, and then we got to change them. So I'm going to stay consistent and vote against it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Alderman Altman-Cloth.
I promise this will be an easy one. When Gallo first got up and was talking about this one, he mentioned it was a first reading, right?
That's correct.
Because it doesn't say first reading on here. So if we make a motion, we can waive the second reading?
That's up to whoever makes the motion.
I'll make a motion and waive the second reading.
Second.
A motion has been made in second, waiving the second reading. Do we have any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Douglas.
Nay.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Nay.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Nay.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Let's move on to our next item. Next item is Consider Act on Resolution 22-R3066 to update the city official map. So I think you've done a nice job to share that with, with the group in the public hearing aspect. Do we have any questions for Mr. Gallo? The recommendation on that one, the one section off of Concord Road, would you just remind the group of that recommendation?
The Plan Commission directed staff to look at the areas between the two crossings of the Oconomowoc River along Concord Road. I did look at that since the meeting, and there was variety of dedications made, but there was 50-foot made as the greatest amount. So I, I recommend we continue the, the purple 100-foot right away, all the way up to the, the northernmost Concord River crossing on Concord Road.
Like to entertain a motion.
Go moved with the amendment.
With the amendment. Any second?
Second.
Second, Kavieski. Any further discussion? Quick comment, Jason, for you, your intern and your team, nicely done. Call roll, please.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
On the new business, Consider Act on the adoption of the 2023 City of Oconomowoc budget. Ms. Sullivan-Murray. Been a long few months getting to this point.
Yes, it has. Everybody's putting in a lot of work. So tonight, we're looking for a motion to adopt the budget and to set the tax lobby.
Before we jump in, I just want to compliment the department heads, all the staff, the council, because this is a pretty arduous process. Whether you agree or you don't agree with the outcome, I can say with, with confidence that everybody here is trying to do what they think is best for the city. So I'll ask for any comments moving forward. Alderman Shellpepper.
Right now, we're reducing the library's budget as submitted by the mayor in the 2023 budget by $35,000. I'm asking that we only reduce the budget as submitted by the mayor by $25,000. In other words, I'm asking that $10,000 be added back to the library's budget tonight. Why the $10,000? That's going to allow, we've heard from, from different individuals, from the stakeholders from the library, that, that that will largely maintain most of the services that it had last year. They're going to have to make tough decisions, they're going to have to find reductions in light items. Overall, we're hoping they're going to be able to keep most of the services and standards our residents have come to expect and are willing to pay for. As the budget currently stands, and I don't know if everyone on the council knows this, I just want to make sure, sure we all realize this, all Sunday hours during the school year are going to be cut, as well as hours each Saturday during the school year. It's going to have a direct impact on hundreds, if not thousands, of city residents. Therefore, I am humbly asking this council, I'm, I'm pleading with the council, just reduce the contingency budget by $10,000, put it in the library budget. The contingency allocation for 2023 was currently budgeted at $100,000. This will drop the allocation to $90,000. It means our contingency fund will be at $99,845 for 2023, still enough to guard against hidden costs or fluctuations in the market. So when the time comes for making motions, I'll be making a motion to amend the city's budget to increase the library's operating budget by 10,000 to a total budget of $1,298,74 and reduce the contingency budget 2023 allocation by $10,000 to $90,000. And I am respectfully asking my fellow council members to join me in supporting this motion when it's made.
So am I taking that, that the motion is made now?
No, not, not yet.
Not yet.
There's a discussion. So out of respect for the rest of the council.
I mean, are we at that point we can make?
You can do whatever you want. It's up to all of, all of you.
You want to go ahead and make the motion?
I'll make that motion.
I will second that.
So a motion is made in second to add back $10,000?
To add, we're going to add $10,000 to the library's budget and reduce the contingency budget by $10,000.
And to approve, approve the budget as amended?
And to approve the budget as amended.
And to approve the budget as amended. So we have a, a motion in a second, do, and leave it open for comment and discussion. Alderman Spiegelberg.
Thank you, Chaz, for that. That was wonderful, because I was going to suggest the same thing. You know, there was an original cut for the $50,000. A lot of constituents were saying, don't cut it by $1. of constituents were saying, don't cut it by one dollar. Betsy did come back and she kind of, I don't wanna say met us halfway because it was never my plan to cut from the budget, but she came back with that twenty-five thousand. I'd like to also see that we put that ten thousand back in. And when you really do the math on that, it translates to only like a dollar in taxes per average household in the city of O'Conawak.
Any other further comments? Alderman, uh, Kavieski.
I want to understand the motion is to put the ten thousand back in and then approve the budget as submitted?
Yes, I'm gonna, yes.
As amended.
As amended, as.
Because there may be other motions.
Right, it could be.
Right. I mean, obviously, if there's other motions, then we're not gonna be able to approve the budget.
I mean, I think if we're gonna do amendments.
Well, actually, hey, the motion is to approve the budget with that amendment. So this is the motion.
That's the motion I'm making.
That's the motion at this time.
So if you don't like that, vote no, because there may be other issues that people wanna raise.
I'm moving to, to, to make the amendment and then approve the budget as amended.
Right.
Everybody clear on where we are?
Would you rather just do the amendment?
I, I don't have any other issues that I wanna fight on, on the budget.
Okay.
A, a motion is made.
We'll take it.
So I'm willing to just be done with it. We'll, we'll do the ten thousand, take ten thousand out of the contingency, pass it, and let's move on.
Motion's made. It's been seconded. Further comments or discussions? Alderman Rosick.
Yeah, so we, we had a variety of workshops. We spent, I mean, here's the budget books for everyone that cares about everything we've actually looked at. We spent about twelve hours going through the budget. We've had votes on this issue already. I was hopeful that we would have a vote to finalize the budget today as is without additional amendments. But if, I would encourage people to vote against this because if we're gonna amend this, then I may want to amend other things. And I think that we should, I mean, we should engage with other amendments.
I think that sounds vindictive.
No.
Why is it vindictive?
This is both the operational and capital, um, budgets.
The entirety of the city budget, yeah.
And I have, I have, um, expressed to the mayor that, and we had conversation about the tuck pointing and that being rolled into a larger capital project as an overall exterior, interior, uh, project. So I'd like to see that out. This kind of, it, it'll open up a lot of things. So I'm, I'm supportive.
Well, it, to finish, you know, where, where I was going with that is, the budget as we amended, it was still a two-point-four percent increase. There's been a lot of misinformation out there about what this is, is or is not going to do. What you said, Alderman Shellpepper, is patently false. They don't need to change those hours. That has only been Betsy's suggestion to their board. That's their board's decision, not ours. But I, if, if the library can't live with what I consider minimal cuts this year and to actually, Floss and I don't often agree, but she suggested if we're gonna have such problems with operational budgets, we should get rid of the long-term space need study. I put that space need study in thinking that that was going to happen. This to me seems like political gammanship to move to make the one amendment and then approve the budget without giving us a chance to do any other changes to the budget. That's unfair. And we had workshops to do this exact thing. And we all were here for those workshops, most of us were, to, to have those debates to, to flesh this out. Tonight is supposed to be more of a formality. Um, I'd love to, I'd be curious what the mayor thinks about this because my understanding is he encouraged, he encouraged me to try to move forward with the budget as is. So I'm curious what your position is, Mayor, on us coming here.
Before that, before you call me a liar though on the floor.
No, no, I didn't call you a liar.
Mr. Rosick, could I respond to that?
Wait a second.
Hold on, hold on. You said what I said was patently false.
Order, guys, let's, let's stop.
It was false. We, that changes.
Gentlemen, that changes out the main. Please. Okay. So let's just be cordial and we can agree to disagree. And so let's, you both can have a comment and then let's move on.
Yeah.
From there. So you wanted to respond, but let's, let's keep it civil, please.
Right, absolutely.
Or I will take other actions.
Absolutely. I, I'm basing my numbers on the numbers I'm being provided by, by the library director who, who has told us straight up, Sunday hours are gonna be cut, Saturday hours are gonna be reduced. So if you wanna call her a liar, feel free to do that. If you wanna say that's patently false, feel free to do that. I don't understand why we're playing a game of chicken between the city council and the library director. That doesn't seem like the way we should operate our government. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Rosick, comment?
Yeah, it, it, well, the reason it's false is because those cuts have not been made yet. The library board makes that decision. The memo that Betsy sent around and, in the October meeting was simply the suggestions based on the cut. It's not final. They can choose to move other areas of money around. And you're right, there is a little game of chicken going on here. I completely agree with you. And it, it's actually coming from the library. We have had years passed, many, many years, and I've got them in front of me, where the library budgets year to year have actually been cut. What we've been hearing around this entire debate is we're cutting the library budget, we're defunding the library. That's not true. We're reducing the requested increased. In two thousand and ten, and there's a lot of things going on, there was an actual reduction year to year of two-point-two percent. In two thousand sixteen, I was actually in council, eight-point-seven percent year to year cut, eight-point-seven percent cut. That's a year to year. In two thousand seventeen, the budget was completely flat. So the misinformation that's being spread about this debate is to me what's sad. And look, I think we shouldn't, we should not be playing a game of chicken on this floor. If we're gonna make an amendment, we should make amendments and then we should all be able to make whatever other amendments we want. So I encourage the Aldermen, and I think it's fair, if Alderman Shellpepper wants to make an amendment, make your amendment. And then if I wanna make an amendment, I should be able to. So if you don't wanna approve the budget with that amendment, vote nay. And then let's go on to a normal orderly process, like we had done through the workshops for about twelve hours, where we made amendments, we had very vigorous debates, and then we had discussion, then we came to a vote.
Alderman Altman Cloth.
Lori, or Ms. Mary Sullivan, can you come up? Can you pull up the chart that shows the different percentages for the different departments within the city? And I just, the, the statement that I wanna make here, and it's, the hour is getting late. The one term I, I hear used a lot, you know, especially within, you know, our Western Lakes Fire District, is the spirit of cooperation. And I wish that we were seeing more of spirit of cooperation within our different departments. And, and I apologize if this sounds harsh, but would we be fighting to put money back into Park and Rec if Craig Hepner had rallied the troops to inundate us with emails and phone calls and public comments? Or are we, are we caving to this because of that? Now, we know that Betsy's held to a different set of standards than Craig. Craig can't do it. Betsy can. She's not accountable to Mark Frye. She's accountable to the library board. We're not, and again, I, I, I'm tired of hearing defunding and cutting the library. The library is still going into two thousand twenty-three with a two-point-four-one percent increase. Other departments are going in with a lot less. I'm done.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Yeah, I'm not making the argument that the, that the budget's been cutting. I, I'm arguing that, that the services that our community residents have come to expect on Sundays and Saturdays are being cut, cut. And, and I understand that that might require a larger increase than the two-point percent that we are increasing this budget over. And so I am just asking this, this council to approve this amendment and approve the budget. You're taking ten thousand dollars out of a contingency fund that in all purposes is overtaxing our residents as a slush fund.
Then let's put all the departments back to what their original ask was.
That we can, that we can sit on. Um, I, I'm not aware of any other departments that have told us that, that direct services they provide to the community, that they have, they have protested against cutting are being done in this budget. You'd have to give me specific examples of, of directors of other departments who have protested against the cut for specific city services that residents, hundreds of, hundreds and thousands of residents within the city currently rely on.
Alderman Kavieski.
To Alderman Altman Cloth, uh, point, we, we have seen a coordinated effort by, by the library to get information out that isn't necessarily accurate. This is an increase year over year. This is a one-point-two-eight-eight million dollar budget, and it's a ten thousand dollar discussion. Somebody made a comment about the city's fifteen million dollar budget and how can we not find just thirty-five thousand dollars? This is one point, this is, this is a significant budget and, and the ask is for ten thousand dollars. They can find ways to operate and, and fulfill their, their obligation and their duties as a library with the thirty-five thousand dollar reduction of increase year over year. I have been coming to the library since two thousand nineteen, volunteering my time, effort and talent for whatever anybody would consider a talent to help with fundraising. And I've successfully done that in several projects throughout, uh, the city over the years. We've started in good faith, the discussion associated with that. This really has me questioning my commitment to doing that. It takes me away from my family. It takes me away from other priorities in my life to do something like that, to have a coordinated effort against a policy associated with a budget, not the services that you provide with the budget, but how you apply that budget, not my deal. This aggravates me to no end to hear the comments that are being made vindictively. Um, and, and I'm gonna vote no, uh, the way this is structured right now.
Any other comments? We have a motion and we have a second. We, we also have a request for maybe rescinding it is what I'm interpreting, but that's not what's, has been brought forth. So I'm trying to follow our, our parliamentary Robert rules. We have a motion, we have a second. Are there any further discussions? Alderman Mulder.
So I, I guess when I, coordinated effort, I am not privy to any emails that went around. Certainly, I think there's a lot of supporters of the library that Betsy speaks with on a regular basis, and I'm sure she fought for her department as I'd expect any of our department heads to really fight for their department. Um, I've been on council for two and a half years. I, this is the most feedback I've gotten from any, on any issue. The last two budgets we've passed have had zero people in attendance besides you, Miss Owen. Um, and it's clearly a passionate issue, right? I mean, we are, we're debating ten thousand dollars out of a fifteen million dollar budget, and we passed the utility budget of thirty-eight million, you know, unanimously without discussion. So I don't know how it became a lightning rod, but it did. Um, I'm, Matt, I'm gonna respect your request and I'll vote down so that we can have open discussion about other points. Um, I, I'm going to vote for this. I hope other people will vote for it. I feel very strongly that Sunday hours are incredibly important. Yes, it's a two-point-four percent. To be whole with last year, they needed a five-point-five percent. Seventy percent of their budget is people. This does not give them, the people hours, they need to be open on Sunday. Sunday is important. Um, it's when kids can do homework. It's if you don't have high-speed internet at home or access to resources, the library is the place you get them, or you go sit in the outside Starbucks and use their wifi. So I'm with Chaz. I hope everybody will vote for ten thousand dollars. I think it's really important for our community. I'm sorry, this has become a lightning rod, but I will vote against it so we can continue the discussion on other points.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
I'd like to retract my second.
So motion is made, but the second has been retracted.
I'll pull my motion then.
And the motion has now been pulled, so there's no motion on the floor. So I'll leave it open for discussion.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we put the ten thousand back into the library.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Nay.
Alderman Altman Cloth.
Nay.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
It is a tie vote.
Aye.
Where's it coming from?
It was four and four.
Was it? We were all four.
Contingency.
Oh, you said I.
Sorry, I was very.
The motion has been made and it's been carried to add back in ten thousand dollars.
Like to make a motion to remove.
One moment, please. This program doesn't allow me to do tiebreakers, so I have to fudge it. One second. I, I, it takes me long.
I get it, yeah. No, you're good, yeah.
Okay, so now I need to get back to where I add.
Okay. I, I just have a question while you're getting ready. Alderman Douglas.
Point of order, the.
Okay.
The motion was to put ten thousand in the library fund, didn't say where it was coming from.
That is a good point. That was not done in the original, uh, uh.
It was in the original one that was rescinded, but not the one that was just made.
Yeah, that's actually correct. Do you want to restate the motion and revote?
Or just make another motion where you should take it from?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to add ten thousand into the library, reducing the contingency by ten thousand.
Thank you. Call roll, please. Or do we have a second? I'm sorry.
I didn't hear one.
Second. Call roll again.
One second. Um, okay. Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Nay.
Alderman Altman Cloth.
Nay.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Okay, it's a tie vote.
Aye. Alderman Kavieski.
I'd like to make a motion to remove the need study from the capital budget associated with the library.
Second.
Douglas.
Okay, I can't do this that fast.
Okay, well, we'll just have discussions while you're getting set up. Um, I'd like to open it up for discussion. Alderman, um, Shellpepper.
I'm gonna vote against the motion because this isn't coming from the levy. This is coming from the reserve. Um, it's, yes, it is.
In our budget book, it's on the levy.
That's correct.
On the budget book, it says levy.
It's not the levy, though.
I, I wanna tell you, it's not the levy. When we worked at the workshop, this was a two thousand twenty-four levy item. You voted to move it to two thousand twenty-three, but we had no levy left. So it had to come from reserves. So I apologize if it was wrong in your book, but it was levy in two thousand twenty-four. But when you moved it to two thousand twenty-three, we had no levy room.
Right, so, so I.
And we decided to put it in reserves. However, that's still part of this budget.
The budget. So I will be more clear in my motion that the re, uh, removal of the two thousand twenty-three need study for the library be removed from the reserve funding.
Right.
Second.
Second from Alderman Douglas. Open up for discussion.
And just to reiterate the point, it's, it's coming from the reserve. So I'll be, I'll be voting against it. Um, I, this isn't, you know, if this had been in the operational budget, I would have been, you know, I probably would have been open to making some compromise there to, to, to supplement the library budget to make sure that we could get to the number we needed. But it's, it's two completely different funding sources, and so I'm just not tying the two together.
Alderman Rosick.
Well, it's not two different funding sources, Chaz. It's all the taxpayers.
It's, it's, well, it's, it's from the reserve versus the, the capital reserve versus, versus the tax levy, right?
It's all the taxpayer.
Right. It's not the operational budget versus the capital budget.
I mean, if, you, would you like me to finish? Can I finish without being interrupted? It's, it's all coming from the taxpayer, one way or the other, whether it's reserve or levy or however it goes. Um, I'm gonna vote in favor of this. I actually moved to put this need study back in, but as, as our former mayor, Ms. Whalen pointed out, why are we doing this space need study if we're struggling to fund operations now, if we're gonna build on a library without any definition of where we go with this new build? There's been no definition of what that's gonna be for. And at this point, you know, I, I, I don't think we need the need study right now. I don't think it's something that we should support at this point. Um, we asked for a very modest, very, I think a modest reduction. As I proved historically, there have been significant cuts. Um, and if, if a library in one instance can't make some additions, and look, we had other departments that took significant cuts. Um, the library was in the exact middle of cuts, both numerically and in percentage-wise. So how can we go forward with a need study that may add millions and millions and millions of dollars of funding from either the city or from the city citizens, along with operational costs for that? So that's why I'm gonna vote against it at this point. Um, I think it's right to pull it out until the library can get its, its house in order. And look, operationally, um, one of the things that we talked about when we talked about the operational budget is how are we funding all the book deliveries? In the most recent memo from the, the library, it said they're actually thinking about adding a worker to help with additional book delivery. And we talked about the unfairness of us subsidizing that. And I don't think we can move forward and subsidize a whole new library and that funding until we get some of those concerns in perspective.
Alderman Mulder.
I, I think there's a, it is a bit of a chicken or the egg, I guess. You don't know, until we do a need study and understand part of that, I believe, Betsy, if I'm correct, is that it's, it's, it's an analysis with community members and with the library staff about what we want the future of our library to look like. Um, one of our residents talked about the. One of our residents talked about the, the library they were in, in Kansas, which I will tell you is typical of where public libraries are moving towards. Ours is a very traditional library that is not in keeping with library trends. That may be fine for people on, on council, that may be where you want it to be, but you should know that our library is not representative of what a public library in a similar demographic city like ours would be. You go around Madison, you're gonna find very different library experiences you're gonna find in Elkhorn Park. My vision would be to help us take there. I think without a needs analysis, I don't know how we even begin to plan. There's been a lot of discussion about fundraising in the library needing to do that. I think that's an excellent point. I don't think, there are probably a lot of examples around Wisconsin where large library additions or remodels have been done without considerable or entirely through community foundation, community support, whether it's through the Friends Group or other, you know, so that needs to be part of it. But that needs study is where we create that vision. That's where we create the, the excitement around what that library can be. Clearly, there are a lot of people in this community that will support through letter writing and emails and phone calls and hopefully will also support with their checkbooks when the time comes. So I'm in favor of keeping this in, I'm gonna vote to keep it in. I, I certainly understand the future budgeting challenges there will be if we have a larger operating space and we have larger staff to go along with that. But we won't even know if that's a reality unless we do the study. I don't know that I'll, I don't know that a much larger footprint is what's required. We don't know that because we haven't had the conversation. It's, the library was built in the 90s, early 90s, back, late 80s? Back when books were everything. And the library is set up to process books and to check out books from a giant desk. That's just not the way it's done anymore. So I don't know that we are going to have this giant building need. But we need a different footprint of what's there, perhaps with some additional space. We won't know any of that. Just a few weeks ago, the eight people here unanimously said, put that in. We have a very powerful ex-mayor that really has a lot of sway over you to have changed that in just a few, with one sentence, a few weeks ago. So I, I don't, you know, I understand it seems like this is probably going down in flames from where I sit right now. I think it's a mistake. I think knowing what we're facing versus not knowing it is better. Saying, well, we probably can't fund it anyway, it's gonna be so big, there's no support for this in the community. I, I don't know really what's changed in six weeks, except that we've had a lot of people come out in support of the library and that's caused us to not wanna do a needs study for some reason.
Alderman Kavieski.
So I'm gonna go back to 2019 and I, I do think they need a needs study. But I don't think that the city should be funding it. I think the people, our citizens need to realize the library isn't funded solely by the city. There is multiple funding sources for the library. Is that correct? Multiple funding sources should be allocated to the needs study. Everybody needs to have skin in that game. And I think that's fair. I think that's fair to our, our, our taxpayer, I think that's fair to the users. And I think it needs to be, I, I think it needs to be fundraised for because with, without that engagement, without multiple sources of, of revenue, making that needs study a reality, you're not gonna have the skin in the game to take it the next step. And that's what we talked about, me and my involvement in doing a vision fund as part of that fundraising effort. And there is not one person that I represent that got really excited when they found out that in the circular, they were promoting material like Lick Like a Lesbian. That's your library. It's in a circular that anybody could have picked up off the front desk. And I think the vision of the library should be better defined. I think the library makes the community a vibrant place, the people who use it, I'm one of them. When I started a renewable energy company with solar and small wind, I went to the library and through the, the resources that the library had, the, the materials that I needed were brought in from outside of our building. Nobody's questioning, that I know of, the value of the library, but how it's functioning and how it's engaged with needs to continue to be worked on. And I would ask your support to remove the needs study, not because it's not needed, but because of how it needs to be funded.
I wanna make sure that we stay focused on, we're talking about the budget and we have different amendments. We have a motion and we have a second. And let's try to stay focused on the topic at hand so we can try to get to the end result. You had raised your hand, Betsy. Okay, it's not budget related, okay. And I wanna keep going, I have Alderman Rosick and then Alderman Mulder after that.
Yeah, just briefly, I, i- if the, the library is going to need to raise potentially millions of dollars for however that needs study looks, this is the good time to start. If there's the groundswell of support for $10,000 shift in our $15 million budget, I would hope that the people that with the groundswell of support for that 10,000 will come out in support of putting together $30,000 for their first fundraising effort to raise funds for the needs study. To me, that makes sense. We've got a situation where, this is from the Institute of Museum and Library Services, since 1992, most libraries are not funded solely by taxpayer money. Our library is. Our fines and fees are miniscule. We don't charge for room rentals to almost anybody, it's only $600 a year room rentals. We don't charge for any of those book deliveries, I know some of it we can, some of it we can't, or we could ask for support. Last year, we only had $6,000 in donations to the library. So if there's really this groundswell of support, if there's really the, the, the folks that really wanna get out there and, and help the library get over that next hump, this is the good time to start. Fundraise for that 30 grand or the 25 or whatever that is ultimately, they can fundraise 50. They could do the biggest needs study they want because they can take segregated funds from those donations and spend it however they want because it's a separate board. That money doesn't have to come from reserve levy wherever it's coming from. So I'm encouraging the folks that came out and supported the 10,000 to get out and support the first fundraiser to raise the funds to do the needs study.
Alderman Ellis. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Mulder first.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Okay. I always miss Kevin.
We all miss Kevin.
Oh. It comes a point when an organization has to begin the process of stepping out and becoming more financially sound without the backing of something that at the end of the day can or cannot substantiate helping them. I had a little bit of an example that I'm gonna give you. And it, it kind of ties into all of this. Okay, so you've got the $10,000 back. As a councilman, I'm gonna own that regardless of my vote, as far as I'm concerned. It passed, so it's a good thing, okay? Far as the study is concerned, with all those individuals, as Matt Rosick has stated, have come out to support the library and make sure that 10,000, if not more of it, was put back into the budget. They need to go ahead and pony up now. Because what happens here is this. Where does the government get its money from? The people. We can go ahead and we can do the study. And we can give you the $30,000, we can give the library the $30,000. But where are we gonna get it from? The people. There needs to become a point when the library says, we got this. We got enough backing. I can make enough phone calls to get the money associated for that study. My daughter called me today. And she told me, she said, I have some really bad news. I said, well, what's that? She said, well, I'm not gonna graduate in four years, I have to go a summer. And that means that, you know, we have to go out for financial aid. And I said to her, I said, well, how many courses do you have to take? She says, I have to take one. And I said to her, I said, I'll pay for it. You've worked really hard for the last four years, I'll pay for it. And she said to me this. She said, no. I don't want you to pay for it. Because I wanna become financially sound enough that I don't have to depend on you at all. And at first I was taken back from it, but then as I think about it, that makes good sense. It makes good sense. Because that brings pride into play here. And now let me circle this back. The library needs to do the same thing. Yeah, shucks, we can cut you a $30,000 check tomorrow because it's not coming out of the levy, it's coming out of the, the general fund. But you have enough backing right now that I'm almost certain you can find 30,000. Easy. I'm, I'm, I'm done with this, okay? People want the government to pay for everything because they think that the government has all the money in the world. But can you say inflation? And then you're gonna turn around and you're gonna start, mm, I can't even, I won't even say the word because I know I'm on tape, about how things are getting so expensive. Now, we put the $10,000 back in. Now it's time for the library to step up and say, okay, we're gonna take, you guys take the, the study off the books, we will take care of that. If not, hey, you know, I don't know what's gonna happen next year when it comes to taxes. And I'm almost certain my phone is gonna ring off the hook saying, my taxes are going up. Why are my taxes going up? There has to become a point in time when you step out and say, I got this. So we have Alderman Mulder and then Alderman Shellpepper.
I, I think there's some confusion about what the library is. It's not a business. The library is not owned by anybody except the city. It's a city building. Yes, other people contribute to that, but if we're going to improve the library, it's a city building, it's an asset of the city. We're not asking them to be a business and make money, just like we don't make any other departments make money. We're not out there asking the police officers to do lots of ticketing to make sure they're increasing their, their rate of return on their police cars. Yeah, it, it's fine, take the vote, it's fine.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Yeah, I just wanna be clear, like, we're talking about $30,000 coming out of $4 million slush fund this city's currently sitting on. So we've got four, how, how much is the reserve, Lori?
Wait, so we just argued about 10 grand, but now we can't argue about 30?
Come on, come on, let, let, no, Alderman Ellis, no. Kevin, please. Let's, let's finish your thought.
You're saying you're gonna wonder if we had $30,000 from the reserve fund, you're gonna wonder why your taxes are going up. I just want everyone to know, the city already took that money from you, they already taxed you for it, you already paid for it, and now we're gonna sit on it and we're gonna just hold on to it because we know better. It's our money. That's what's happening right now. And if you really wanna know why your taxes are going up, it's because we're adding $130,000 police officer and we're also adding a significant portion of the Western Lakes Fire District, which is, which is a referendum we passed. It's, it's not because of the $30,000 space needs analysis.
I'm sorry, but that's because of safety. At the end of the day, that is because of safety. That's our job here. Our job is safety of this community.
Did you call the question?
So just one moment, so Alderman Douglas has his hand up. Let's not be so stubborn. We're not going in a good direction, folks. Alderman Douglas.
I kinda start with what brought to my mind what Alderman Mulder said and then when Alderman Shellpepper kinda spoke up about this $30,000. There's multiple other places that have raised money. And we're talking about a splash pad, we're talking about a pickleball court, we're talking about body cameras for the police department, we're talking about a canine program. So at that point, then, if we already taxed it, then maybe we should pay for the canine. And then when the next person comes, we should pay for that out of our slush fund. I mean, that's kinda where you guys are directed to. The $30,000 is significantly lower than anyone else has raised money in the last couple of years for anything that they needed. It's that simple. It's not a huge ask. That's all I have to say.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Call, call roll, please.
What's the, let's, let's clarify what the vote is, please.
Remove the 2023 library needs study from reserve funding. That is a motion. And that, I thought it was 25,000, I keep hearing 30.
It's 30.
30 in there? Okay, I'm gonna add that.
Prior to the vote, I'd just like to make one comment. Alderman Rosick asked me to, for my opinion and it wasn't.
That was actually for before.
Do you not want my opinion here?
I do.
So the, just making a quick comment. The, the budget was presented to the council in a bud, in a balanced and a good format by a lot of work by others. It is then the council's responsibility to use their policy decisions, which is what they're doing today. Whether you agree with it or don't agree with it, they're doing their, their job. They've worked their butts off to try to accomplish this. In my personal opinion, I initially was not in favor of the needs assessment. You can even ask Betsy because I challenged her and was a little bit rough with her at one of the workshops because I see a lot of these assessments, I see a lot of these studies. And they're unbelievably expensive, but then the outcome doesn't give us value. And I was struggling to try to figure out that value. I spent a little time with what I would consider the expert of this industry, which is Alderman Mulder. And he made comments that actually made sense to me now in this assessment. And those comments are, maybe we're able to utilize the space we have better, maybe we're able to update it. But in all the different projects we do, whether it's this or it's any other project, you have to get either a study or a design work or something so you can figure out what you're doing. So while initially I was not in favor of the needs assessment, Betsy, I was not because I couldn't see where you, you were going, nor did you convince me of where you're going. I believe that if this does go forward, it has to be done with a lens cap on it so if we spend the money, we get value for the report out of it. It's not a lack of confidence, a lack of definition for that. When it comes to the reduction in the budget request, the budget request reduction started at 50,000, then went to 75,000, came down eventually to 35,000. We had our expert here say 25,000 is a realistic dollar amount and I have never changed from that viewpoint. And I have shared that with the aldermen. I am comfortable with reducing the budget request by $25,000. I can live with 35 if that's what we have to do. I absolutely will fight tooth and nails if it went to 50. And I have shared that with, with council members here, so they all know my position. But I haven't shared that with you and the public. Because the goal is to try to preserve something that's very valuable in our community. And it may be, how do we fund it, which I think Alderman Kavieski was very clear about. And you can look at that from different perspectives. I can tell you the library is fantastic. The majority of our friends from my family came from Storytime when our kids were young and we took our kids there. It has a lot of value in different ways. At the end of the day, it will go well, it will still survive, we will all do just fine, however these votes go. But as requested before, I just wanted to share my opinion as the mayor. My job here is to present everybody with a balanced budget, which was done with the help of the department heads, Lori and Mark. Where it goes from that, as you've seen, I do not get into the debates. If I truly wanna get into a debate, I have to step aside, put another alderman in my seats so I can actually actively debate on the council floor. That's called, that's the law. So sometimes people say, well, gee, Bob, you don't tell anybody anything. Where there are parts of it that you do your work. Where there are parts of it that you do your work prior to a meeting like this. So while you may be upset or you may be happy based on whatever vote comes forward, I can tell you categorically, every one of these council members are working their butts off, whether you agree with it or not. So we have a motion and a second. We're ready to call vote.
Call the question.
Call the question. So are we, call roll, please.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Nay.
Alderman Mulder.
Nay.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Nay.
Alderman Kowieski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
So I'd like to entertain a motion for any other amendments or the budget as a whole.
Motion to approve the budget as a whole as amended tonight.
Second.
Real quick, I was going to make that motion to remove the tuck pointing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot about that.
Are you okay with that?
Okay.
Yeah, I'll withdraw.
Withdraw?
Second.
Withdraw the second. Okay, Alderman Kowieski.
So previously in the workshop, we had, there are several items that I think everybody agrees need to be addressed with City Hall. There was discussion about doing a needs analysis, evaluating all of those projects, bundling that as a capital expense.
Don't talk about needs analysis.
Too soon, too soon.
I'm for doing
Fire up your fundraising, Mark.
There is value in need studies. How they get funded is why I voted yea. So we had
I need to have you be clear as to what your request is.
My request is to remove the tuck pointing from the capital expense.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Yep, that's my motion. Want to move it to the next year? I want it moved as part of a larger capital expense project.
But that's an operating expense.
It was an $81,000 capital expense and it's to preserve the exterior of the building. So the tuck pointing on the building is a maintenance item. Anything we do inside the building is not dependent on that project. It's to preserve the exterior.
There's additional exterior elements to the building that I think we agreed need to be done outside of the tuck pointing, which would include window replacement and other exterior elements. So I think it's probably, again, based on the process we went through, this should have been included in that. I thought it was included in that. It's not. And I'd like to make the motion to remove that from the CapEx. My motion.
So what you're saying is remove the $82,000 $81,000 expenditure out of the capital fund to do the operational tuck pointing.
It's exterior cleaning and tuck pointing.
It needs to be done. It just needs to be bundled with a larger project. That was the discussion. That's what we talked about a couple of years ago. It's not going that direction. I think it should go that direction.
So a motion has been made to remove $82,000 81 from the capital budget and not to do maintenance work on tuck pointing and cleaning on the exterior. Motion has been made. Has it been seconded?
I'll second it just for discussion purposes.
Like to open it up for discussion? Alderman Spiegelberg?
What's the downside to pushing this off, Mark? I mean, I think I know what that answer is, but isn't this just going to maybe potentially make this worse and cost more down the road?
So, you know, because it's a masonry building, we have the mortar joints around all the bricks and over time, that'll break down. So you periodically clean your building and then find out where those areas need to be ground out and then new material put in. And what that does is it keeps the water from getting behind the brick.
Thanks, Lori.
And so it's a maintenance item. I agree with Alderman Kowieski. We've had other items that have not moved forward, window replacement. You know, those are, you know, some of the decisions that we have to make as department heads is we come forward trying to work within our budgets. And, you know, right now, the priority is that. The clock tower is going to come up as a priority. But we try to space that out. When you look, you know, between Public Works and the Building Maintenance Department falls under that. You know, we took one of the larger reductions in our budget this year. So, you know, we tried to work within the system. It's just that we thought that this was a priority to be getting done. There's a lot of things we'd love to do to this building, but as we've sat here for several hours tonight now and talked, you know, everything's a step at a time and, you know, what's the priority and where's the money?
So what's your opinion?
I think it should be done. I think the exterior.
Alderman Kowieski?
Again, I'm not saying that it doesn't need to be done. How it gets funded has been the discussion for quite some time. So bundling this is a part of a larger project that evaluates the overall exterior of this building was one part of what we talked about. The other part was the interior remodeling that needs to be done. That's another element of what we need to look at. I'd love to see those plans come forward based on, again, I was in the commercial interiors business for a long time. That is the process you go through. You bundle that together. You can put that into a larger debt spend or bond. And it makes it more attainable to do as one larger project as opposed to multiple smaller projects. That's what I think is prudent financially and in the best interest of the building.
So a motion's been made and a second. Any further comments?
Yes.
If you're going to remove it from the capital budget, I'd suggest that we adjust the fund balance that we're using for the capital budget to cover that. Okay?
Alderman Mulder?
Yeah, I'm trying to, I understand what you're saying, Lou. It seems like that could easily push this several years down the road because it's not really anything that's on anybody's radar right now. We've got a lot of things to pay for. And this is not, I mean, it isn't just, it is, it's maintenance. It's not. So it doesn't feel like we're wasting money. We're getting ahead of it. But it's going into capital versus, I mean, it doesn't feel like the funding source is that different. It's $80,000. I don't, I just, I don't have a compelling reason to not do it when the guy that knows the building is saying, "Do it." So I want to do the bigger project. This just feels like it's, this is a Band-Aid. We should do now is all.
We talked about doing windows back in 20, what, 19?
Alderman Rozak polled those. I'm not pointing out anybody, but
But the reason they were polled was to bundle it in a larger project. If you take a look at our long-term financial plan.
We have a motion and we have a second. But also, I just have to ask a question because maybe I've missed something. Was this voted on in our workshop?
It was not. It was mentioned in the workshop but not voted on, which is why it's not in the
We haven't missed anything? No, okay. So we have a motion and a second. Call roll, please.
Alderman Douglas.
Nay.
Alderman Rozak.
Nay.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Nay.
Alderman Ellis.
Nay.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Nay.
Alderman Mulder.
Nay.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Nay.
Alderman Kowieski.
Aye.
Motion failed.
So I'd like to entertain any other motions.
I'll move to approve the budget as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call roll.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Nay.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Nay.
Alderman Kowieski.
Aye.
Let's move forward onto our next item. Consider act on setting the 2022 property tax levy for the 2023 budget.
Right, so we need a motion to set the levy at $15,429,94.
So moved?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Nay.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Nay.
Alderman Kowieski.
Aye.
Moves on, on to staff reports. Do we have any staff reports?
No, Mayor, we do not.
No staff reports at this time. Like to have any reports or comments from Alderman at this time? Alderman Kowieski.
We'll figure, right? Two comments. First one is, we have a fundraiser tomorrow for raising money for the K-9 unit for Oconomawak Police Department at Wine Maniacs. If you think it's funny, don't come. If you think it's serious, because public safety is a serious item, please come and support the police department, support the K-9 unit. And it's an incredible event and it's an incredible endeavor. Second item is, oh, man. So I've been serving our community as an Alderman since 2017. It has been an incredible experience. I absolutely love the city. We are coming into December where people are going to be getting their signatures to either run or to retain their seat. I want to take this opportunity to publicly announce that I will not be running again for Alderman to represent the city and the residents of District 2. I hope that gives people some time to consider service. Is it easy? No. Is it rewarding? Yes. It is one of the most rewarding things that you can do. So we hear comments from citizens on a regular basis about all of the things that are difficult. The best way to address that, put your hat in the ring. Whether that is serving an elected seat or attending a fundraiser or volunteering your time or sitting in the audience. We have an issue in our society right now that more people like to complain than to provide action. The only way that we're going to fix that is to fix our approach. Get active. Please. Consider serving if you live in District 2. I'd love to talk to you about my experience. I promise I won't scare you away. Or talk to anybody who serves currently or who has served in the past and never leaves you. And it changes your life forever. So that's it.
Any other comments? Aldermen?
As a fellow District 2 member, you know, I appreciate your service to the district, to the city. When I first was interested in running, I reached out to you and Tom Stray. And so you have been nothing but encouraging and friendly and respectful. And even if we don't always agree on things, you know, you're a great friend and a great asset to the city. So we'll miss you. I'll miss sitting next to you.
Well, we have a few months left, so it's all good.
Don't remind me.
Alderman Rozak?
For me, I think we've been pretty strong allies on council over the years. For my part, you'll be missed. I think you're an asset on the council. You're thoughtful. I think a lot of the stuff you've done over the years, just your fundraising efforts alone for some of these projects. I mean, it's got to be in the hundreds of thousands. At 100,000, I don't know, I don't even know, between the skate park and body cams that we did together, the K-9 stuff, the splash pad, all these things you're involved in, it's truly incredible. I think we all could learn a lot from you on some of those things. But you'll be missed. Good luck. And hopefully, you, you know, come out for a budget debate next year just for fun.
The other thing, my other comment was I think, I voted yea on the budget. The budget, we should, as a community, be proud of what we did with this budget. Not to pour salt on any wounds of any kind, so don't take this as that. But we were able to, with suggestions from the mayor and Mark and this council, able to add another full-time police officer to our community. We didn't get it, a lot of that debate happened in the workshops. But it allows us to be fully staffed, 3-4-3. That means when two cops are domestic disturbance, we still at least have one cop available. There's oftentimes that we are at a 2-3-3 or a 2-3-4 or whatever. We now, 2-3-2. But right now, we're at it, with the addition of the full-time police officer, full-time next year, we'll be at a 3-4-3, which is where we should be at for our community. I'm proud of that work we did to get there. And I think that's a good budget for the people. And we should be happy because it's avoiding, hopefully, some of the things we had to deal with with the fire department and future referendums. And we're addressing one of our core issues, which is safety.
Any other comments from Alderman? Final, oh, Alderman Ellis?
Lou, thank you for your leadership, man. We've had a lot of conversations. There are a lot of the things we agreed upon, some of the things we did not. But I appreciate the bar that you set for that next person that sits in that seat there. Thank you. And to the mayor and staff, thanks for putting up with us.
And vice versa.
This was not easy. You guys don't get, this was not easy. I think in our heart of hearts, we wanted to be here 10 minutes, say, "Okay, budget's fine," and walk out. But we understood that we have a job here that you put us, you voted us in to do. And it's very difficult. And I want to thank you guys for the patience with which you showed through this time. Thank you.
Final comments from the mayor? Lou, that was a surprise. I wish and I hope we can get someone to fill that role for District 2 that has half of your passion. I don't think anybody here has more passion than Lou does for this city. And thank you. That is very, very much appreciated. The other thing is, I would like to make a request of you. Lou's working on something that is incredibly important. And I would like to ask you to continue with that leadership role and find some liaison work to work with this council in the future on helping us reduce fentanyl, the fentanyl problem that we have. He's doing some great stuff with the county. He's working with Paul Farrell, with SOFA. And I don't want to lose that. And what I want to make sure is that the door is wide open. But also, maybe there are ways in which we can create opportunities to engage with the council because it's real. And it became real because I learned from Lou. I did not know. So thank you.
Just real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
If anybody knows me, I'm not going anywhere. You'll see me doing fundraisers. You'll see me engaged after April. It'll just be as what I would consider the, and I've said this publicly, the most important office in the land is a citizen. It is not Alderman, it's not mayor, it's not governor, it's not president. The sovereign is the citizen. So I will return to that role.
When you have my word, I'll give you a little bit more than three minutes if you come up to that podium.
No, no!
Do I need an audience change for that?
It's the Lou and Flo rule.
So I'd like to, again, thank everybody for coming. This is a lot of work for just making this community what it is today and really where it's going to go in the future. And coming back to the comment that we would love to have more people serve, whether it's on committees, whether it's to run for Alderman or for mayor. We need high-quality candidates all the time. But a lot of people complain, to your point, but not a lot of people engage. And that word servant, leadership, is what everybody's doing here. And that's very, very important. So wish everybody a very safe drive home back. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
All in favor?
Aye.